I gotta go answer a phone call, quick.
Oh, yeah, you want to do pictures, so we'll move?
Yeah, we'll move.
I wouldn't get too close to me, just put it out there.
And then we'll also take individual shots. And so this is Mayor Mark Damba. Also, before I forget, these meetings are streamed live on YouTube and they're available like right away. So if you wanted to go back and watch whatever's on the city's YouTube channel, almost right away. So come on over here. And Mom and Dad, Mom and Dad, come over here and drive in and get pictures. And if you want a video of what's going, totally fine too, it is on YouTube. But you're also welcome to have other meetings.
Sure.
Ready, one, two, three, one, two, three, one, two, three? Okay, I'm sure you do.
Let me take one for our, for ours, because we have our social media as well. Thank you. Oh, they'll take that back. I'll give it back to you.
All right, cool, I'll give it back. Okay.
Okay. I hereby call the 2,284th meeting of the Milwaukee City Council to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so the first item we have is our outstanding Milwaukee High School Student Achievement Awards. Today, we are celebrating two because we missed our December opportunity. So if all the principal and the two students would like to come up.
We're gonna do one at a time.
Okay. All right.
Good evening.
Evening.
So I'm very excited tonight to be presenting two amazing young women that represent Milwaukee in a very good way. I do want to read a couple things that a couple people said about you, Sienna. One is that it's rare to find a combination of extraordinary brightness with consistently hardworking. Sienna's both. But Mr. Lindman had the most to say. Sienna is my right-hand gal, vice president of the National Honor Society, director of Community 101, co-director of Relay for Life. She's the glue to so many organizations, also including the YAC, which is the Youth Advisory Council and Habitat for Humanity. She works tirelessly for organizations that help others. Simply put, service learning is her signature. As a student in chemistry and physics, she was unyielding in the ability to make sense of the content and is an exemplary model student who reads a text on organic cam because she loves biology. Sienna is mature beyond her years and is an amazing young woman who will go far due to her dedication to learning. And I'm just very proud of Sienna because she is an amazing young woman who contributes so much to our, not only our school, school community, but our community as a whole. And she's one of your future leaders that, you know, Mr. Gamba, she might take your job one day. She is a policymaker. She wants to work not only at the local level, but at the state level when it comes especially to health and awareness in our community. She's been, over the last few months, working on a Health Week that will be happening in February. So she's, she's just an amazing, inspiring, wonderful young woman. So thank you for everything that you do for us. You're awesome.
All right, well, the way we usually do this is allow each of the councilors to say a few words. So who wants to start?
Start. I'll start. Great, amazing stuff you're doing, Sienna, taking all these AP classes on top of the other things that the principal was talking about. I was wondering if you might tell us a little bit about Youth Advisory Council and, and your Health Week project.
Well, Youth Advisory Council is definitely my favorite thing. So with that, we work directly with the Health Center, which is our clinic onsite at Milwaukee High School. And what we do is we provide the student advocacy that really gives students what they need when it comes to health and when it comes to taking control of their health literacy and really taking control of their lives in general. As the student part of that, we do lots of education. We go into Rao and we go into other high schools and we talk about health literacy, how to make appointments, the general stuff that you don't really get from health classes. And we really provide that information that they need. And the Youth Advisory Council is formulating this Health Week. It will be called Milwaukee Wellness Week. And we really want to get in touch with our community through club involvement. So we're gonna have different activities every day sponsored by different clubs organized with different nonprofits so that club members can get more in touch with nonprofits for future jobs, for generally getting more in touch with the community and really making Milwaukee High School a part of Milwaukee rather than a separate entity.
Great, great. Well, congratulations, it sounds like great stuff. And sometimes the student tells us what their plans are for after Milwaukee High School?
I really want to study epidemiology and bioinformatics. So I want to go into the spread of disease and the spread of different chronic illnesses and different changes and through statistics. And I really want to display that to the population in a way that's easily digestible.
So I think, I think sitting right here is certainly a candidate for one of the Rotary Youth programs. You know, the, I think it's Rotoract where young people in colleges and, and that get together and figure out how to do the kinds of things that, that you're doing. And, you know, great leadership opportunity, you know, for, for young people. So that might be something that you look for when you go to, you know, school after Milwaukee High School. We don't unfortunately have a Rotoract or Interact program in the schools at this point in time, but hopefully in the future we will. But colleges very often have them. Seems to me you'd be a great candidate, you know, for that. So it's pretty amazing stuff. So thank you for what you're doing and thank you for your service, service above self, service to others all the time. Thank you.
I'll definitely be looking for Rotoract, I haven't seen that before.
I just wonder if you have any data on this flu that's going around?
Do both of us have?
She's patient. Especially how to get rid of it, like get rid of it now.
Excuse me. I thank you very much for everything that you're doing in your community and, and our community. You know, I think, Ms. Gelman, I just, I, this is probably our favorite meeting of the month and, you know, we'll, we're just, I'm excited to see what, what you do. And I, I do hope that as you, as you move on, wherever, wherever life takes you, I hope you remember us because I feel like I'm gonna be seeing you again and I just wish you all the best.
Thank you.
As policymakers, we rely on people who can translate the hard science because it's our job to make hard decisions and we can't make those well if we don't have good information. So kudos to you for starting early on figuring out how to interface with people and then still having this interest in statistics, which, more power to you, I've taken graduate-level statistics. I left that program. So that's really wonderful to see and, you know, it's a legislative session. We're gonna be down in Salem fairly often. So if there's something you need, maybe we should talk at some point. And thank you, thank you for doing this.
Thank you very much.
As you're probably aware, housing has been an important focus of this council and creating affordable housing. So your work in that realm, I think, is particularly exciting. I was, you, you serve in a leadership role in that, right? Can you tell me a little bit about that?
So for Habitat for Humanity and Youth Advisory Council, we do housing work there. Habitat for Humanity is definitely more direct. We're doing the builds, we're getting people hands-on and we're getting people the carpentry skills they need to continue to benefit people that need the housing and that need these resources. So as far as my leadership position, I'd say it's, it's so fulfilling to see the families that we get to help. We have, for Habitat for Humanity, we go to these builds, we teach people how, these skills, and we benefit these communities that really need us and that really need our skills. We're also getting the volunteer hours that I know teenagers want. And even like at the end of the year, we have a Hope Builders Breakfast where we get to see the communities we've affected and we get to meet the people and see how the houses are and we get to ask how the floorboards are and if we did great on that nail that one time. And those simple things are amazing, especially in Habitat. And as far as Youth Advisory Council, the low-income housing resources that we offer there are mostly towards students that access the Health Center and that fill out the form and say that they need those resources. We get them in touch with nonprofits and we get them in touch with communities that can help them and really make them feel safe at school and at home. And I love housing too, that's another big branch.
That's important stuff.
And in talking to both some of the legislators and some of the folks down at Health Housing and Human Services, I know that there's interest amongst some people in, in seeing how we can expand health services in the high schools or probably in the schools in general, but the high schools have. So I'd be curious to know your thoughts on, on what that would look like. What, if, if you were in control, if it was your job to decide, what, what would you expand? How would you change the programs that, that the high school offers?
Are you talking about the educational health programs or the offerings?
The actual clinic.
Clinic. Clinic offerings.
Yeah.
So expansion-wise, I think the main thing that we want is we want it to feel safe. And we have a lot of people that, like, especially when you're dealing with students and especially when you're dealing with youth that don't understand how healthcare system works, how their part is played. I think one of the big things that we can do is adding that safety thing, adding the fact, I think the fact that it's in a school is so good because you, when you can walk down the hall and you can see a doctor that you can see at a clinic outside of school without having to extend the resources of asking your parents, of getting a bus pass, of traveling there and taking that time out of your school day, I think it really makes you feel like a safe, like it's a safe place to be. Like, and the fact that you can leave at any time and see a teacher that you even feel safe with. And we also offer those educational things at the Health Center that are really good. Filling out paperwork, knowing what to do if your parents won't cooperate with you when it comes to healthcare. The safety thing, feeling safe in understanding reproductive care and understanding mental health care, what mental health is, how to treat yourself when you're not at a clinic. I think expansion comes with education and comes with understanding that people need to feel safe to access healthcare.
Well, thank you. And thank you for all the work you've been doing and for the impressive resume. I too look forward to see what you, where you end up and what you end up doing. It's gonna be good, good information for us to have in this world of a constant, constantly growing population is way past our planet's capability of maintaining it. I think disease is something we're gonna see a whole lot more of on much larger scale. So the city of Milwaukee is proud to recognize for outstanding student achievement in academic, civic engagement and extracurricular activities at Milwaukee High School, Sienna Day. That'd be known to all, to all that on this 15th day of January 2019, the City Council of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation, and the County of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, recognized this student as an excellent example of the bright future of this community and nation.
Thank you.
This is Najra Wheat Barhey and she goes by Nas. Another amazing young woman at Milwaukee High School. And I want to read a couple things that some people said about you. Nas is both focused on her studies Naz is both focused on her studies as well as excellent at interpersonal communication with a true interest in the realities of the world which she lives in. She is a joy to work with and an important member of Milwaukee High School community. Naz is great. In my first interactions with her this year, she asserted that last year, a student from Ascension was able to do the graduation speech and her goal is to, and she felt that a student from Saha, which is Students of African American and African Heritage Association, should be doing the speech this year at graduation. So she has the clarity, foresight, and determination that carries with her at all time. I've been impressed with Naz's energy and advocacy from day one when I met her. She makes Milwaukee High School proud on a daily basis. And as your principal, Naz, I'm really proud. I'm very excited about Naz just having the, being so courageous. She's the president of Saha. She's involved in the community. We're working with a local book writer, Rima Zaman, whose book comes out on February 5th. And Naz has been involved with that as well and just having a voice for a lot of women and empowering young women in our community. And that's something that she's really, I think she gets really excited about and she's involved in those conversations. And they're planning our Black History Month Assembly coming up in February. And I just love your courage and how you've jumped in and you just are always ready to help out and do anything you can to make Milwaukee High School a better place for all students. And you're such a great role model. So thank you.
All right. Who wants to stand?
I can. Yeah, thank you. Once again, an amazing young woman. So I see you came here two and a half years ago. Big culture shock, big, big difference. So what, what have you found that has, has, God, I can't think of the word. Like really astonished you or like, wow, I never expected that or whatever in a really positive, good, you know, sense? What sort of was your aha moment or what blew you away?
Like literally everything. I used to live in Ethiopia. It's in Afri, it's in East Africa, like if y'all know that. And the schools, like the most, my ah moment was like probably the school because like we used to learn in like a blackboard and like we used to study page to page for every test. Like you don't have a page range, you just have to study the whole book for a test. Nobody tells you what and what. Like you have to just do what you have to do for yourself. And when, like here, the teacher explains everything, like it's pretty easy.
So you're saying American schools are too easy?
That's why you're taking, what is it, two AP courses and you've had four AP courses so far?
Yes.
That's amazing. That's just awesome. So that'll help you get into college with actually some college credits already?
Yeah.
That's, that's awesome. Where are you going to go to college?
We're still debating with my parents. I've already been accepted to OSU and PSU, but I haven't, like, I've applied to other, like, out-of-state colleges and we'll see.
Yeah. So major in psychology, huh?
I'm majoring in neuroscience and minoring in psychology.
Very good. Well, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. It's a delight to see you.
Yeah, something I could add, I want to add is like Ms. Gelman, since Mr. Brown left last year, which was our principal, like we thought like nobody would hear our voice because like Saha was literally like, Mr. Brown was the head of it. So he helped with everything and once he left, we were like, who's going to help us now? And Ms. Gelman came and like she, she like, she made a lot of change, was like better than what we had before too.
Oh, great. That's good to hear.
Thank you. About you.
Oh, what did I see the other day? Empowering women, empower women. And so good for you for recognizing your principal. And I also want to recognize, I see some other adults in the room who seem to be very proud of you. And so I'm just, I'm really excited to meet you and I'm really grateful that you came to Milwaukee from far away. And though you find it easier, I hope you also find the support around you is, is, is good and comforting.
The culture shock and like the language differences. The language difference wasn't that, that hard because I used to, like I used to learn at private school, so we had English all of my years, but still culture shock was the main part.
Well, congratulations on everything you've done and everything you will do. And again, thank you, Ms. Gelman and the adults behind you for supporting you and helping you grow into such an amazing young woman.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're a very impressive Nazra Wheat?
Nazra Wheat.
Nazra Wheat. Okay. Can you tell us about your Equity Committee and what kind of work you do with that?
Equity Committee usually happens once a month. And we talk about things that should make Milwaukee a better place, like diversity, LGBTQ, like all our clubs. Now we're talking about how we're going to have like awareness to every class. Like last year we used it as like, it was taught as a, like as a subject, but now we're like discussing about different like strategies to, to give awareness for the students.
Well, you're a very impressive young woman, as everyone else said. And, you know, I'm, I'm impressed with anyone who can go study neuroscience and someone who, for whom it's, English is their second language. I'm, you know, doubly impressed. So I wish you all the best wherever you plan to go. And I will put in a pitch for you with your parents that going out of state to school is, is a good thing, you should sometimes.
I needed that.
Yeah, I went a long way. I went halfway across the US for my undergraduate degree and I never was sorry, so. Anyway, best of luck.
Well, I'm so glad to have the chance to meet you, Naz. You're great. You're just great. And I love, again, seeing this combination of commitment to community service and a keen mind that's interested in science. I think that combination is, despite what we've seen tonight, a really rare one and a really valuable one. So I, I hope it continues to provide inspiration and, and opportunities for growth for you as you move forward. And yeah, thank you for doing so much good work.
Thank you.
Equity is a big deal across the country right now, as we all know. And I think this is one of the places where youths can really lead the way because there's so much entrenchment in the way older people think about these kinds of things. So I'm really glad to hear it's happening at Milwaukee and I'm really grateful for any leadership you all provide to the rest of us on that count. So thank you.
Yeah, I was going to make that very specific point. We, our vision, our 2040 vision calls for us to be entirely equitable as a city. So any tips that you can give us, any, the work that you're doing at the high school, if you sort of see broader application for a city, we seriously would love to hear. I, I've always wanted to hear from the youth and we involve the youth in the visioning process, but then we don't, that was it, right? Then we stopped hearing from them, so.
Something we should all accept first is like, it won't happen overnight.
Sure.
Because we've had this for like years now and all we need is like progress, year to year, year to year. Eventually it's going to change. Like all we need is like awareness to everyone. You can't change a mind, like a person's mind. That's, that's, that's the reason I want to take, I want to like study psychology because you can't change a person's mind in a day. It's like a progress you have to go through, like through time. And I believe in time, it will happen.
So is that, I'm curious about that. So you, I mean, you're sort of looking at the brain from the two completely separate sides, right?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm curious what, you know, specifically what your interest is.
My interest was actually, it all started when I was taking biology and I kept asking why and why and why and why. And my teacher was like, you should go to psychology, like you should take psychology. And she referred me to psych on my junior year and I took, no, I mean, on my sophomore year because I was a freshman at that time. And I took psych on my sophomore year and AP psych on my junior year. And I was completely sure I wanted to study psychology, but also I was interested on the science side. So psychology was just, was just like, this is this and this is why this happened. And there's like a scenario of something. But when it comes to neuroscience, you can tell like the biology part and also like the psych part too.
I think you're setting yourself up to learn a lot of things that the human race needs to know.
Yep.
Thank you. I, I look forward to hearing what you learn as well. But seriously, as you guys do your equity work, if you think about things that the city can be doing specifically, please reach out to us.
We will.
Either to me or to Ann or any of the council.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right. The city of Milwaukee is proud to recognize for outstanding student achievement in academics, civic engagement, and extracurricular activities at Milwaukee High School. Nazra Wheat Birhey. Let it be known to all that on this 15th day of January 2019, the City Council of the City of Milwaukee, a municipal corporation in the county of Clackamas in the state of Oregon, recognized this student as an excellent example of the bright future of this community and nation.
Who do you want in the discussion about food?
No, I do not.
Who do you want in the discussion about food?
I just, just you, okay? Maybe.
It's always so gratifying.
I know. Don't you just be done now?
There's a few people sitting out there who like that.
All right. We're on to the consent agenda. Tonight's consent agenda includes the council meeting minutes of the December 4th, 2018 regular session, December 18th, 2018 work session, and the December 18th, 2018 regular session. A resolution affirming the appointment of a letting library board member to serve as the city of Milwaukee's representative on the Clackamas County Library District Advisory Board. But not naming them, oh. And a resolution acting as a local contract review board authorizing execution of amendment number two to the agreement with Global Payments Direct Inc. for card payment services. Who's the appointment?
That appointment is going to be?
Krista Downs?
Yeah, I think you're right.
Trying to, hold on, trying to pull.
We usually announce that.
Yeah, Krista Downs is the, Krista Downs.
Okay. Thank you. Does any member of council wish to remove an item from the consent agenda?
No.
I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
Has been moved and seconded to approve the consent agenda as presented. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None heard? It passes unanimously. Audience participation. This is the part of the agenda during which council will hear citizens' statements regarding city business. Those wishing to speak must fill out a yellow speaker registration card available on the table in the hall and identify agenda item number four, audience participation. As council has other business items on the agenda this evening, speakers will be limited to three minutes each. Because the information provided during the public comment may be new to some counselors, the city manager will respond at the next council meeting to those comments that require follow-up. Before we begin, are there any follow-up reports from the January 2nd, 2019, audience participation is over?
No, there was no public participation at the meeting.
Okay. So the only one I have is Baldwin Vanderbile.
Is this on?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I'm Baldwin Vanderbile and I lived in Oak Grove for 40 years. I'm also the chair of the Oak Grove Community Council, which is the local community planning organization just to the south of here. But I am here not in that role tonight. I'm substituting for Thelma Hagen-Miller who has three meetings scheduled tonight. She wrote a letter which will appear in the Clackamas Review tomorrow and I'd like to read that letter into the record. And you have a copy of that or should have. So remember, this is Thelma speaking, not me speaking, although I agree with everything that she wrote. After attending several community outreach meetings regarding Happy Valley's decision to withdraw from the North Clackamas Parks and Recreation District, I am convinced the process has become mired in distrust and lawsuits for one simple reason: the citizens never voted on this decision. NCPRD was formed in 1990 by a vote of the citizens of unincorporated North Clackamas County and the city of Milwaukee. Happy Valley annexed it to NCPRD in 2006 by a vote of the citizens of Happy Valley. In June 2017, the Happy Valley City Council, not the citizens of Happy Valley, voted to withdraw from NCPRD. The citizens then approved a ballot measure to transfer the 54 cents per $1,000 of property tax assessment they were paying to NCPRD over to the city of Happy Valley for creation and maintenance of its own parks district. What is wrong with this picture? The citizens are being left out of the discussion. Why is no one considering a vote of the citizens on this critical withdrawal issue? That vote should be, could be scheduled for the next special districts election. The only way to solve this impasse is to take the decision-making back from the courts and the lawyers and return it to where it has been before in the hands of all the NCRP and Happy Valley citizens. I urge concerned citizens of Happy Valley and NCPRD to learn more and to weigh in on this issue in two upcoming meetings. One is on Tuesday, January 22nd at 6:30 at the Rock Creek Middle School. And the other one is on Wednesday, January 23rd at 6:30 at Rex Putnam High School. And this information and a lot more is available on the NCPRD website. Respectfully, Thelma Hagen-Miller, Oak Grove. Any questions I might answer?
No, thank you.
Thank you, Baldwin.
Who else? All right. So we have no public hearings tonight. Our next item of business is the appointment or selection.
You're done.
I guess I'm done.
You're out.
Okay. Selection of a council president. This is something required by our charter to be done after every election, I believe in which there's a change of council. But I don't even think it's, if there's a change of council, I think even if.
It's every election.
It's every election, so.
So Mr. Mayor, I've happily served as the council president for the last four years. It's been an easy job because you never miss.
I think once.
And I think maybe twice. Yeah, maybe twice I got to chair. But anyway, I wanted to nominate Wilda to serve as the council president. She's, Wilda's, or Councilor Parks has indicated her intent not to run for reelection in two years and I thought it would be nice to have, she started with us as the mayor for a short period and I thought it would be nice to have her finish as the council president.
Well, thank you.
Well, I was, I was thinking along similar lines in the sense that I was thinking it's good to give people the opportunity to have, to share meetings and to learn how to deal with that.
Even if you never miss.
I could start missing if you want. I wouldn't have a problem with that.
But I think when you have the expectation that you may have to step into that role, it probably dispositions you to think about the meeting a little differently.
It does.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I, I appreciate your willingness to, to share the love, so to speak. And, and I'm fine with Wilda. I was, I was toying with, seeing if Council Falconer wanted to take that position, but I'm.
You're good.
I'm agnostic. I don't care.
Are you, are you seconding your motion?
Well, I, can I?
Running the meeting over here.
Can I, can I speak to that actually? Because I, I do sincerely believe that we need opportunities to cultivate leadership on the dais as much as possible. And the fact that Councilor Parks has served in all of these capacities for so many years. And the fact that Councillor Parks has served in all of these capacities for so many years is wonderful, and all of us have benefited. But I'm wondering if there might be an argument to be made for having someone who hasn't had as much experience with leading, meeting after meeting after meeting in all of these different settings, to, to step into that role and, and see what it feels like. And get some of that experience under their belt. That was an argument for Councillor Falconer, by the way, not me.
Well. Yeah, we already know that you're good at chairing meetings. We've, we've all sat. I can think of dozens of meetings I've sat through that you've chaired, right?
Probably.
North Clackamas, or North Industrial Area, and Rotary, and a number of others, so. What do you think about giving Angel a shot? Get a little under her belt?
I'm, I'm okay either way. I think that it's, it's kind of different sharing this particular meeting as the mayor than sharing, chairing it as, you know, like the council president in the place of the mayor. It's a different experience because you're still carrying through someone, someone else's, in a sense, someone else's basic agenda, you know, and that, that type of thing. So I would, I would say that, I'm not sure that it matters so much that someone has led that before. I mean, if you wanted to use that discussion, it's also Lisa had chaired Planning Commission for years before coming on City Council, and so she had experience with that. But, you know, that, that wasn't necessarily a, a point to be brought up, and I'm not sure any of that is. It's just, you know, it's luckily not a position where somebody has to really do a lot of heavy lifting, you know, and that. If Councillor Falconer wants to be in that position, I'm fine with that. I appreciate that Councillor Beatty nominated me, but I would not, I would not want our council to get, to seem to be nor get to be divisive since there's only five of us, and, you know, that looks kind of like a half and half situation, and then you'd have to make the deciding vote. You know.
Appreciate that. And, yeah, and, and our, our council stands out in the region for being a particularly cohesive council, so I appreciate that, too.
I'd say collaborative, maybe not cohesive all the time.
Thank you, that's a pretty good.
Better word.
I would agree.
And I, I would appreciate the opportunity, but I also don't have strong feelings between one. I feel like we find ourselves in a very, in a familiar position, Wilda.
I think so, too. Well, for, for those who aren't familiar, Angel and I were the two candidates for the interim mayor position. And I think, you know, probably either of us would have done a good job, you know, and it was only a few months, but, yeah, so there we were. But then when, when she ran for council, we collaborated together, and we both ran our campaigns together. So that's the kind of council that you have in the City of Milwaukee. And, and I don't, my last two years on here, I don't want to do anything to lose that. At the same time, I mean, sure, my last two years on here, I'd be happy to serve as council president, you know, and, and that, but it's nothing I'd go to the wall for, so.
Same.
You're all gonna let me do it, aren't you? You decide.
Actually, there's been no, there's been only one nomination, no second, so, I mean, we haven't gone through the process.
It's true, I did not formalize the language. Would, would you like me to do that, or?
You want to make a nomination, that would be good.
Okay. I would nominate Councillor Falconer as well. It's a great situation to be in.
Yes.
Two great choices.
I think I'm in a sec at that nomination. I really did, I really would like to see Angel get some, a little bit of time doing, you know, chairing.
You're gonna have to make sure you leave at times.
I can arrange that. So that's my second. And that one, yours wasn't seconded?
Right.
Okay.
Right.
So, in that instance, it has been moved and seconded to nominate, to have Councillor Falconer serve as council president. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? None heard. It passes unanimously. All right, on to item B. Comprehensive Plan Block Two Policies, a resolution. This is a process where we're pinning down the Comp Plan Block Two Goals and Policies so that the Comprehensive Plan Committee can then move on to the next set of things. And this can be introduced by our senior planner and joined by our planning director.
Right. I think David will make a short presentation about this, and then I'm available to help answer any questions.
You're just about there.
I'm about to start chatter.
All right, thank you, Mayor Gamba, Council President Falconer, councillors. David Levitan, senior planner. So we are here tonight to discuss Block Two of the Comprehensive Plan. As, not going to go into too much detail, but just, we've broken down our work plan for the Comprehensive Plan update into three blocks of work, each with four topic areas. We also have a concurrent housing block that's moving along, just starting up now, that will be moving concurrently with Block Three, that will be starting this next month of February. So what we're here tonight is to discuss potentially the council adopting a resolution to pin down the goals and policies for the four Block Two topic areas, which are Parks and Recreation, Willamette Greenway, Natural Hazards, and Energy and Climate Change. The first three are existing topics within the Comprehensive Plan. Climate change would be a new addition. It would be added to the energy chapter, and it's obviously something that's been a high priority of the city over the last few years. So just a little bit on the process and community engagement to date. We've had five CPAC meetings, the most recent being last week. I would point out that based on the length of my housing presentation at that meeting, there have been some requests to go ahead and turn on the lights and buzzer there for the presentation. If we get to that point, feel free to do it. But we've had those five CPAC meetings. We had a town hall that had about 100 people attend back on October 15th. We also had an online open house that ran concurrently with that open house. We had a work session with the City Council back on December 11th, and then we've had a couple of work sessions with the Planning Commission as well. And then we've had, made sure to, to reach out to the various department heads and other key city staff that have been involved with our technical advisory group, to make sure that programmatically, as far as the impacts on city programs and city budgets, that they've had the opportunity to really review these policies, to kind of ground check, ground truth through them, and kind of provide a reality check on what the potential impacts of these policies would be. Since we came before you about a month ago, we met with NCPRD staff, Catherine Krieger, the planning manager there, primarily to focus on kind of Parks and Greenway policies, and she provided a lot of good feedback that we've incorporated into the updated goals and policies. We met with the CPAC last week and got, we didn't spend a whole lot of time on the Block Two policies. We really jumped into the housing last week, but they provided a number of good comments, which we then turned around in a day and then emailed back out to them, and we got consensus as far as a recommendation to bring these forward for the potential pinning down by resolution. Attachment Three shows all the changes that have been made since the version of the goals and policies that you reviewed on December 11th. And what we're looking for tonight, and kind of, we're not going to be going through each individual, each individual policy as far as the ones that have had changes since December 11th. We did have a couple that we've pointed, that we've kind of elevated up, and we wanted to make sure that the council provided direction on us, in addition to some comments that we've received just within the last day. So Policy 7.4.1 was one that we discussed at the last meeting. It deals with how do we potentially limit or restrict development within kind of high-risk natural hazard areas? And so we can get into that one once we get through this. I'd like to get through the presentation first, but I wanted the council to keep that in mind when we get into reviewing these and when you provide comments. We'd like to get your thoughts on just the strength of language that we should have related to that. You know, there's pros and cons to that. Obviously, a lot of our industrial areas are located within the floodplain, so we need to consider the economic reality of that and just the, the potential impact on employment lands, as far as if we're going to be very strong in proposing to restrict future development in those areas. Councillor Heisey provided some pretty limited comments last night, and Denny went ahead and proposed some potential language to address her comments. We thought that they were good comments, so I'd actually like to pass that out. Some potential edits to what's included in your packet in Attachment Two. These would be some additional limited edits to what's included in Attachment Two.
I know. Thanks, Denny.
Also, just this afternoon, we received a pretty long list of comments from the North Clackamas Urban Watershed Council. Those, Mayor Gamba was CC'd on that email, but they haven't been distributed to the rest of the council. I went ahead and prepared an Attachment Five as part of that. We're obviously not going to really have time to go through all of these, so we'd like to just kind of get some general direction on how we should do this, just given the late hour of when we received the comments, and just kind of what your thoughts are as, as far as how we can incorporate, you know, if you agree with any of those edits or any of those proposed language changes. Denny had brought up that, you know, we, we do have an opportunity in the future. This is pinning down the policies by resolution. It's not adopting them by ordinance, so there will be additional opportunities within that fourth and final synthesis stage. So I would like to start by handing these out and just maybe we can have a conversation about, you know, these specifically, but just how we should be treating comments, maybe that come in at a relatively rate, late stage of our review process for each block.
And we will be holding public hearings prior to adoption. So we haven't gone through that kind of process up, up to the, these resolutions. We've been basically just following through with our committee work and then bringing that forward. The hearings will address full package, so it's, they'll be potentially complicated, but.
Whoa.
These comments, yeah, we just, I finally had a chance to look at these during your work sessions tonight, so we, we don't expect you to be able to necessarily read them tonight and make it, make a decision. I think the, as David was pointing out, we could come back and address them at a later meeting to pin things down, or we could simply just say we're going to pin down the policies with, with the knowledge that we're going to review and, review and address the North Clackamas Watershed Council comments during the synthesis stage.
Would it also be fair to say that if you guys just received these, that you also haven't had an opportunity to even see how they would fit into the framework that we're looking at right now, and the red line, the clean version, you know, all that?
I think that, I think that some of them are addressed already or will be addressed in natural resource policies. Some of them are really good comments. So, I, you know, just doing it on the.
Doing it on the fly doesn't seem to be the right thing to do.
We haven't had an opportunity to talk about them at all.
Right.
You know, so, yeah, I just, I think it would be a little difficult to just kind of take them on the fly tonight. So the question is whether you want to do them at a, a follow-up meeting to this and just deal with these questions, or we just carry them forward to the.
In your initial review of this, did you see anything that was, like, highly significant or that would change things dramatically? I mean, because I'm thinking that otherwise you could just incorporate, if it's a matter more or less of wordsmithing or using different terminology or something, you know, you could incorporate those kinds of things.
Most of them were, were just strengthening some of the draft policies related to and considering either wildlife habitat areas and the natural, natural resources, or looking to private organizations and advocacy organizations as partners. So if there's a theme there, it's those two elements. And, and I think there are places in these policies where both of those could be emphasized more. But the other thing that is coming, Block Three are the natural resource policies. So we can, actually, some of my notes, as I look through these, I thought, oh, that really ought to be in the natural resource section, not necessarily in the greenway section, or not necessarily in the park section.
Yeah, that's, I was just thinking that and, and then wondering, were we planning to reach out to Nicky Wick and Johnson Creek Watershed Council for that section?
Yeah, I think that's an excellent thought. We, I, we hadn't thought directly to do that, but.
But this would give you pause to think of that.
Yeah, if, if we pull them in, a lot of this, at, at least where they seem to be heading on a lot of this, could be incorporated, like you said, in those areas. And then anything that wasn't, we could bring back in the synthesis stage, I think, makes a lot of sense.
There's a handful of things that we would plug back into the, the policies after we do that.
And I do appreciate hearing from them.
I do, too, and it's clearly, they put some serious effort into this and thought.
But it is unfortunate that they're doing it at the 11th hour. I mean, Joseph Edge is on the, or Joseph Edge provided extensive comments before, so they, they clearly have, he's their chair, so they've clearly been on notice and that they're doing this at the 11th hour.
I, I think Joseph, Joseph has consciously tried to separate himself in his role from, at the Planning Commission, from his role on the Watershed Council. So I, I know he was pretty conscious of that. So I, I think.
This is probably mostly in the air.
You know, but we are getting Joseph's benefit, the benefit of Joseph's insight as, and here we're getting the rest of the Watershed Council's comments.
And so, yeah, as far as tonight, you know, depending on your, you know, what the council decides, we would propose adopting a resolution pinning down the Block Two Goals and Policies. As we mentioned, there would be an opportunity to further refine the policies during that synthesis stage. And so with that, I think we would just like to, you know, discuss that, you know, specifically that Policy 7.4.1, and then the proposed edits from Councillor Heisey that have been incorporated into the revised policy language, well, the revised goal language and policy language in Attachment Four, so.
That's, to me, an easy one.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, those are easy edits. Those are good.
Yeah.
See anybody having any objection to those, yeah?
Nope.
Good solid language tweaks.
And then, so, yeah, we would welcome additional comments on individual policies, but if we would like to start with that Natural Hazards Policy 7.4.1, if, if the council has any kind of feedback or perspective on, you know, what they think of the. any kind of feedback or perspective on, you know, what they think of the currently proposed language, how they think it could be strengthened or needs to be strengthened, we would appreciate that guidance, and, you know, we'd be happy to assist you in that analysis.
One thing I might add here is the policy language is kind of in the framework. We deliver the regulation through the code. So I think there's some flexibility that we built in here. So I don't know that we can, we can extend this conversation to when we have to deal with the code, to like, pin it down exactly. But on the other hand, if you want to provide clearer direction for the code into what types of uses we want to see in the floodplain, we could spell that out more here. And I think David, and it was Alma who raised this at the last, at the last meeting, about a good portion of our North Milwaukee innovation area is in the floodplain, and it would be impacted if we were to prohibit those industrial uses in that area.
Agreed, but by the same token, I'm actually surprised that wasn't made really clear when we were doing the North Main Innovation Area work, because I think future planning most certainly ought to take that into account.
Right.
I mean, if we're, if it does start to redevelop the way we hope it starts to redevelop to densify jobs, those new buildings and whatever transportation systems should absolutely take into account the strong likelihood that over the next 50, 100 years, we're going to be seeing significant flooding in there.
They do have to do a balanced cut and fill under our current code language. That does not prevent someone from actually working in that, in the floodplain area. I want to mention that the city of Portland is attempting to get a grant, and they've asked us to partner with them in that grant to do, to do a channel migration study for Johnson Creek. So it would potentially provide some new, updated, more accurate floodplain information along the entire length of Johnson Creek. And I owe the city of Portland and USGS a letter stating that we would be happy to participate in that. So that might help ultimately in helping to define the floodplain a little bit better through that area. That doesn't necessarily solve the problem of how welcoming we are to new industry in those floodplain areas.
Right.
Well, and we had a proposal for a, I mean, we had a theoretical, hypothetical, theoretical kind of proposal that was a pedestal parking in the floodplain, you know, parking in the floodplain, the building built up over that. So, I mean, there are ways to build.
Prepare for it.
Yeah.
And I do wonder if there's, you know, I think all night long, we're going to be talking about how do you balance the tension between wanting to encourage certain behaviors and not wanting to completely let go of the process to whatever folks want to do. And so I wonder if there's a reasonable way to think about increased mitigation, you know, tree planting requirements or what have you for development in some of those riparian areas? Because if there's a way we could help to address the increase in stormwater runoff in addition to helping them build in ways that will accommodate flooding, that sort of gets us to a slightly better balanced approach.
Right, yeah. We, a lot of the stream going through, a lot of Johnson Creek going through the industrial area has been very channelized and hard scape? What's the word I'm looking for?
Ripraped.
Ripraped, yes, exactly. And if there was some process, and the problem is you get into the thing where you might have an area developing, a property developing that doesn't touch the creek, so if you make it that they have to do some restoration on the creek in order to do what they're doing, it becomes problematic, right? Because then you're, so, but something along those lines where we can maybe start to fix the problems that are inherent through this process, recognizing that it's a floodplain, recognizing that we need to enhance wetlands and the riparian area to help absorb more of the flooding? And if we did, could do that as mitigation to--
Yeah, I think, I think we're onto something here. The policy as it was written basically says, the second part is restrict development for uses that have a demonstrated community benefit, could be jobs, could be a park, could be other related, public-focused elements, and for which the natural hazard risks and environmental impacts can be adequately mitigated. And so I'm thinking, what's adequately mitigated in this sense? It's doing exactly what you were saying. It's trying to do a better job of capturing that runoff and slowing down runoff and managing any flooding impacts from that. So we could add a policy that says, you know, explore additional mitigation requirements for development within floodplains to ensure that we are managing runoff and stormwater adequately or something like that.
Well, I'd want to explore a different word than adequately too, when we start talking about, because that becomes very--
Subjective.
Subjective, yes. And you get lawyers from a developer out there telling us that, you know, planting this bush was inadequate mitigation.
But actually, any, like, any big industrial parcel that were to redevelop would already have to do onsite--
Stormwater.
Stormwater that we don't, they're not doing now. Most of them aren't, right? So any redevelopment is actually going to be better for the--
Sure.
For the creeks than it is now.
But if we could, if by this process, we could cause the creek to start to be restored and the riprap to be removed and the, and wetlands and riparian area to be, start to be developed along the creek in mitigation for--
Well, we might be able to even start, you know, that might be the kind of project that the Watershed Council or, you know, wants to take on after Portland does this study. You know, you don't have to wait for--
Right, sure.
Well, and depending on what eventually becomes of the biological opinion from NOAA and from FEMA, you know, the intent is to restore it to a more natural state and to establish the floodplain areas as basically, you know, the special study area, and, you know, it's geared towards providing habitat for endangered species. And so that entails trying to restore it to a more natural state. So how aggressively we want to pursue that, I mean, it's still kind of up in the air, how that's actually going to be implemented, so.
So that's one piece of it, and I think, you know, listening to the Com Plan Committee, when they're, when they're talking about these areas, a lot of them are thinking areas that are greenfields currently and trying to cause those not to get developed, so that if there are areas that could be, should be absorbing flood in the natural sense of how that landscape would be functioning in a natural world, to not allow new hardscaping in an area that's currently doing its job, absorbing flood. So I think there's kind of two parts to that, right? Stuff that's already developed, and maybe we can make things better when it's redeveloped, and things that aren't developed, and trying to keep those from causing more problems down the line.
Yeah, I--
So it's, we may have to sort of take that thing apart and create sort of two--
I think that makes a lot of sense.
Two bullets. So it's, it's almost sounding like we might need to come back on this, so we have some opportunity to--
And we had something similar to, I mean, with the Block One policies, we had kind of some very last-minute tweaks that we needed to be making. If I can recall, I think we might have actually then adopted by consent, because it was down to like one or two things, and we provided like a supplemental staff report and said, this is how we're addressing it. I still came to the meeting, and I believe that it ended up being, I would have to look back at the--
Yeah, I think, yeah, I think that worked out okay.
I think it may have been adopted by consent, so we could do something similar. I mean, just propose splitting up that one, and then, I mean, let's go through, and if you have any additional comments on other policies, we could, you know, that'll obviously determine whether we could go that similar route.
Okay. So to just, to go back to the substance of this, it would be looking at more of a higher level of protection and riparian protection and restoration in those areas that are undeveloped, and then in the redeveloping areas, allow a higher level of development for those areas that have already been disturbed.
With some additional restoration being required--
Yeah.
In some, you know, and so I've been, even properties that don't touch the creek, if they could pay into a restoration fund, or if they could help fund some part of a project that Johnson Creek Watershed Council had going on, or they could donate to Johnson Creek Watershed Council, or something that actually causes restoration to occur on the creek somewhere for the work that they're doing.
I just need some clarification for tonight on this as we're working on staff. So are you looking mainly at the North Milwaukee and the other industrial areas, or are you also looking at the downtown core?
Are we in the floodplain?
We have some parcels that the city owns that they are currently redeveloping--
Oh, sure.
--that are actually within the floodplain. So I am asking this, the reason that this, just to bail the staff out a little bit, the reason that this became a little convoluted is because we have a priority that city has set for some of those parcels, and so we wanted to make sure that we didn't actually, through our Com Plan process, preclude our ability to redevelop. So, here ya? Yeah, I think the mitigation aspect of both of those, or of that policy, is going to be really important, that we nail that down and get that really right.
We get it, right.
Yeah, and we're happy--
That's a redevelopment situation. That's not a greenfield.
Correct. And I think a lot of these are going to be redevelopment, but even doing restoration on site is going to be difficult, and so those are just things I want to make sure you guys are really aware of as we're going into this. It complicates this discussion for staff.
I have no idea how you implement any sort of restoration fund, but this seems like, especially given the restrictions of Koho Point, and it's just not very big, that seems like a really good argument for finding a way to essentially buy restoration credits of some fashion.
Have a receiving area.
Yeah, absolutely.
I mean, Nicky Wick, that's what they do. That is their, that is their reason for existence, is they do restoration along Kellogg Creek and the other creeks in their district.
We're far, we're more, we're far more able to do something like that than an onsite restoration. So it's just something to think about. I'd like staff to have a little bit of time to think through this, but that's--
I don't know.
That is what has complicated this discussion.
The perfect onsite restoration project for that building is to remove the dam. It seems pretty straightforward to me.
I'll get right on it. Well, and I, I mean, I, yeah, I mean, I mean, the parcel is small and, you know, the amount of restoration, but I sure hope we're not talking about letting the Blackberry jungle that it is continue.
No.
I think there has to be some amount of restoration along--
Absolutely. It's really a question of, we're talking a lot about runoff, and we're talking a lot about green spaces, and those are really critical, but in a downtown core where you guys are actually trying to get literally sightline to sightline, you know, development, where you're actually trying to build out an entire parcel, it becomes more and more complicated. So if you want to target this to your industrial areas, that becomes one option. If you want to have a receiving area for the credits, that's another option. We're open to what it looks like. Just wanted to make sure we highlighted a complication.
So that's sounding like a bigger discussion than--
We can set this one policy aside. You can pin down the rest of it, and we can hold it over to synthesis, or we can come back with it.
We're going to be having a very robust synthesis discussion, right? These are the things that were fairly clear in the community about where we're at. There are a couple nuances that we have to bring back no matter what, and some of them just got placed in the wrong chapters, so there's going to be some rerouting of some of these anyway. It's going to be a pretty robust process, just to try and figure out how all the pieces move together. So I'd, if it were to me, I would recommend that, because you guys are so close on so many, that the things where you're in agreement, you pin them, and for the rest of them, that you let staff come back at that phase.
Could, could this chapter just reference the natural areas chapter, and then this piece of it, the more robust, it's not natural areas--
Natural resources.
Natural resources chapter? Could the more robust sort of detailing of how we're going to address these things be done in that chapter?
Yeah, I mean, the mitigation especially, I mean, the mitigation is a natural resources response to a natural hazards problem.
Right.
And so I make it, you know, as Ann just pointed out, you know, the synthesis stage will also establish, well, where is the best place to put some of these policies? Is this one that's better suited for that natural resources anyway? So, I mean, we can table it, and we're not punting it to synthesis, we're just pushing it back to--
To Block Three.
Probably should be in the first place. Natural resources, so.
Yeah, I think that, that makes sense to me. Okay.
We'll bring, we'll bring it back, we'll bring this one back as part of the package that deals with mitigation.
And it'll be great, because then this gives the committee an opportunity to work on this, instead of it just sort of occurring here.
Naturally occurring.
I was starting to get into my notes.
So we're pinning down with Kathy's amendments minus 7.4.1. Is that what we're doing? I'm probably ready to make a motion.
Did anybody else have any other?
I just had one query on four point, I think it's 4.4.4, actually, 444. I think that's where it is. Throughout the rest of this, we've changed everything from NCPRD to the Parks and Recreation District, but in this case, it says NCPRD, and then in parentheses, Parks District, so--
I think we just missed that one.
Yeah, okay, great. If we can just change that back, that's fine. Thank you.
Yeah.
All I've got on that one.
I don't have anything either, so.
Yeah, I hear Lisa, did you say you were ready to make a motion?
I'm ready. Everybody else is.
Yeah, I think so. I--
Okay. I move that we approve the resolution pinning down the proposed goals and policies in Block Two of the Comprehensive Plan Update, final versions of which will be adopted by ordinance during the synthesis stage of the project with these four changes. Withholding a decision on Section 7.4.1, amendments to Goal 4.2 as proposed by Councilor Heisey, amendments to Policy 7.4.6 as proposed by Councilor Heisey, and elimination of any extraneous references to NCPRD.
I'll second that motion.
So it's 7.4.1?
7.4.1.
Okay, I got that one. Did somebody second that?
Mm-hmm, I did. Yeah, thank you.
It has been moved and seconded to approve the resolution pinning down the proposed goals and policies in Block Two of the Comprehensive Plan Update, final versions of which will be adopted by ordinance during the synthesis stage of the project with these four changes. Withholding Item 7.4.1 until after we've done the natural areas resource, minor edits on 4.2 and 7.4.1. minor edits on 4.2 and 7.4.6 per Councilor Heisey and the removal of any stray NCPRD mentions. Is there any further discussion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None heard, it passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I think our next item is the urban, draft urban forest management plan discussion. Probably Works Director Peter Passarelli, our Tree Board Chair.
And as everybody's getting set up, I just wanted to take a moment to make a comment. Something wasn't clear, but it just happened to some of you, so I just wanted to make sure it's clear tonight. As we're looking at the management plan, you're not actually adopting the policies inside the management plan. This is simply a statement of these are things that they'll be bringing you for discussion over the course of several years to see if they're of interest to you. There was a lot of discussion with staff, in particular inside our structure, just to make sure that we're going, we're giving you the rigor that you need. These are ideas right now. Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, I'm Peter Passarelli, I'm the Public Works Director and with me tonight is Andy Taylor, our Tree Board Chair.
Thanks for having us, Councilors.
Before we get started, I do want to apologize for the temperature.
Thank you.
We are holding you personally responsible.
It's gotten better.
Damien told me he'd take care of it.
It just goes back, it's because we keep covering ourselves with our coats.
I have been in contact with Damien and we're going to see what we can do. I've tried all the little tricks that he's told me to try.
Well, the thing is, at least you agree with us, it's cold in here, no matter what that number says.
Damien got it grilling last time he was here, but...
Yeah. I told him I put his number on speed dial.
I apologize and we'll try to make it better. I know it's either, seems like it's always too cold.
It's always too cold in here.
Thank you, Peter.
So we wanted to spend some time this evening and talk about our draft urban forest, draft urban forest management plan. So the plan really defines the Tree Board's recommendations to the board on how we'd like to manage the urban forest in the community. And, you know, it defines the goals and objectives and actions to take to try to maximize the benefits of our urban forest. I wanted to talk a little bit about the process that we went through putting the plan together and developing the plan. So if you recall back in February of last year, 2018, we had a Tree Board Annual Update and at that meeting, we discussed our, with the City Council, the work plan. And in that plan, we identified three items that the Tree Board wanted to work on. The Urban Forest Management Plan, Tree Code Updates, and Outreach, Publication, Public Education and Outreach. So through the year, we've focused on really two, well, all three of them to some extent, but primarily we felt that the plan, the Urban Forest Management Plan was the main focus of the year. So throughout the year, we've worked on developing the draft internally with the Tree Board. We've worked with Planning and Engineering Departments on defining the plan and incorporating comments from them in the plan. In the summer, we developed an outreach strategy to get, meet with the community and find out what the community's thoughts were on urban forest. We went through in August and September and had a pretty broad outreach process where we had an online survey that was available, I think, pretty much the whole month of September. The Tree Board spent a lot of time, I think they went to 13 different community events, NDAs, and reached out there and talked to the members at the NDAs about the plan. And we even had a drop-in session at the end of September to get additional feedback from the community on the urban forest plan, on a draft. So we had that draft and then from there, we took comments that we received from the community and refined the plan, put another draft together and then did some further coordination with planning and community development to incorporate some things there, received some additional comments from them in terms focused on how the plan integrates with housing, how it integrates with other development projects. So we incorporated those comments into the plan and then finalized a draft to bring to council this month for additional feedback.
I would just add that Enviroissues helped with our public outreach, kind of coordinating all of that and putting our survey together. They also made their own recommendations and I was just, I'm mentioning them because they were a great partner from the Tree Board's perspective, so really valuable input that they provided us.
And Enviroissues also helped us with our Climate Action Plan and the Comprehensive Plan, so they were very useful.
Should almost be just another department.
So some of the things we...
Leading question.
Some of the things we considered during the development of the plan was, you know, in, to integrate into the plan were climate change goals that we were putting together during our climate change process, action process, housing affordability, development that's occurring in the city, infrastructure, our SAVE program, and other co-benefits that trees might provide. You know, we realized during the process, early on, actually working with engineering, that there was going to be a lot of points of conflict with trees and the infrastructure, the $15 million or so in infrastructure that we're getting ready to build on the, within the city for part of this, as part of the SAVE program. And, you know, we worked with Chuck when he was here in the Engineering Department to sort of identify potential solutions to look at as they're developing their plans. But I think the Tree Board realized as they were going through there that, you know, you can't save every tree, there's certain places where there's just not necessarily the space to do those sorts of things and we wanted to incorporate flexibility into the plan and realization that you can't always save every tree, that there's conflicts with that. And the same thing goes with other development, development in the downtown area, development related to housing, where we're trying to, you know, increase our density within the community, that there's certain places where you just can't save, necessarily save the trees. That might be there. But we wanted to build in flexibility into the plan that may provide different options there. Perhaps you could mitigate offsite for those types of things. So we took those considerations into account during the development there and we really actually spent pretty much, I think, the month of November and the early part of December really trying to get closer to, so we were more complimentary with the housing affordability and development on what the urban forest plan was going to do. I don't know if you had anything you wanted to comment on that, Andy? I did want to talk a little bit about the takeaways that we got from our public outreach event. So during our outreach, we think we reached out to over 300 residents within the community. We thought we got a pretty good feel from the responses and the takeaways we really got there is, you know, the community values the trees that are part of the, that are within the city. There is concern about development. There's certainly concern on the Tree Board's side with development. I mean, Mission Park, the Mission Park development was one that was really sort of concerning and a driving force to, behind some of the members on the board. And the community feels that it was important, or the respondents, should I say, the respondents that we got felt that it was important to preserve and protect large mature trees, both on public and private property as best we can. There's concern about canopy removal during construction. And generally, I think it was in the 70%, 70% range supportive or very supportive of restrictions on tree removal within the community from the respondents.
On private property.
On private property.
Specifically.
But people also wanted to retain the rights to maintain, conduct maintenance, pruning and things of that nature on their own property. They wanted to make sure that we were planning for mature tree preservation and tree planting during infrastructure projects. And that there was also a desire for further engagement and outreach and education. And the plan, I think, captures some of that as well. There's certainly an awareness in the community of the intersection between tree protection and the other goals that we have in the community. So in terms of how the goals, the urban forest canopy goal of 40% ties in with the Climate Action Plan, but also the conflicts that it has with other development. So people realize that.
The desire for further engagement was a pretty major theme across all the survey respondents and I can also just attest from all the interactions I had at public events, just how much this community cares about its canopy. And, yeah, that was very encouraging to see and kind of brought importance to the work that we're doing and, yeah. So I think that this community is, you know, kind of on board for making sure that we take care of our trees moving forward and that was really encouraging to see.
So I saw Andy at a lot of events over the summer. I mean, you guys really did a lot of work to outreach with your survey and, you know, farmers market, concerts, you know, neighborhood picnics and stuff. So I feel like the inputs you got at the upfront, you know, you did a nice cross-section, although I do wonder about outreach to the business community and especially to our industrial areas where we do have some heavily treed, you know, some not, some, but some heavily treed areas. So that was one question I had. And I guess my other concern is, so now you've got the plan, but we haven't gone back out with any, for any input, for any take on... I mean, you got input before and you got 70% saying they're in favor of a permit system for tree removals on private property, but we haven't gone back out and told people. So that's, 70% of people said, that's what we're thinking about doing, you know.
So I will, on both pieces, I'll take the last piece first. So we are in the process of updating our website, our urban forest website. Natalie spent, has spent some time and I think she's put together a nice draft of the website for our urban forest plan and she's working with Hannah to get that, I think, online this weekend, so, or this week. And there'll be that opportunity for residents in the community to see what's in the plan as well. So, yes, we did want to, though, before we went back out to the community to get some feedback from council as well on the plan. In terms of the industrial piece or the business piece, so our thoughts on that were as we proceeded further, we were going to begin to develop specific packages of updates to City Code that reflected some of the goals and objectives that we set out in the plan. And from there, we were going to work with our Planning and Community Development Department to conduct case studies on the code, but also to develop, put together a business workshop to talk about the codes that we were putting in place or were presenting. So the plan is set, there's six focus areas. And the focus areas we discussed back in February of last year, 2018, there's an area that focuses on forest size that deals with that urban canopy component. There's one that deals with the health of our forest. There's a focus area on species and age diversity of our forest. There's a component of street tree management. There's a focus area focused on consolidating our management of our urban forest and then there's that outreach and public education focus area. And within all of those focus areas, we've identified an overarching goal and then identified objectives to drive our efforts and actions, strategies to sort of get, to move down that way. So the first focus area is the forest size one, as I mentioned. And really, the goal there was to work towards achieving that 40% canopy coverage by 2040. It's a strategy that we identified in our Climate Action Plan during that process and have included it in there. I believe we've also included that, some of that language in the Comprehensive Plan, Block 2 language. And then the, some of the objectives that we identified in there, we want to try to focus on trying to maintain our existing canopy. Right now, we're around that 26% area and that's based off of LiDAR data that we received from Metro. They're getting ready to fly another aerial photography flight this spring, so, in summer, so we'll get an update on that that will incorporate any new plantings or removals. We wanted to begin to plant new trees. I don't think we've had a tree planting program in the community. Just this week, end of last week and this week, Julian and Sanu, our Natural Resources crew, they've actually planted 120 trees.
Nice.
Wow.
I've seen a bunch of them, wow, that's a new tree, that's a new tree.
So these are the small ones, these are Deodar cedars, I think, that they planted at our campus, JCP campus, along the sloped area. They are probably more acclimatized to that, the warmer sun and that type of soil conditions there.
Seems like there are some new trees along 17th, too.
So we've planted some new, those were, we planted those in the fall, actually.
Between the bike path and the road?
Yes, yep.
Wow, awesome.
Between the bike path and the road.
That's like a two-fight strip we're not talking about.
Not on that one.
Oh, okay. Very skinny trees.
Well, yeah, I was saying, but I do think we need to plant that.
We need to do something.
We need to do something with that.
Some plants, some shrubbery in there, some Oregon grape or something.
The shrubbery. Julian and Sanu have planted some trees along the bike path on 17th. Also out in front of the JCP campus, they've planted trees there and along the right away to the west, right next to the property that we just purchased, the Cassinelli property. I think they planted, on those three areas, they planted a total of about 50 trees. They've got some more trees planted, we're going to do some additional planting here at City Hall. A lot of these trees are very mature, so we want to start putting in some new trees to provide that age diversity that we've talked about. So, you know, that's one of the, one of our objectives is that tree planting piece.
That was a question I had in here. So, you know, we set our, similarly to the SAVE program, right? We set a goal of having safe routes to all these places. We set a goal of having all of our ADA, at least Level A or whatever it was called.
Priority one.
Priority one areas done. And then we said, okay, and how much is that going to cost? And how are we going to fund it? And I don't want this to be any different. I want us to be, I don't want this to be an empty goal. So we need to be thinking about, okay, 22,000 trees, whatever the number of trees is it's going to take us to get to 40%, what's that going to cost over what period of time or how are we doing that? And then come back and we will have the discussion. And then come back and we will have the discussion about how we prioritize that or how we do that.
And my only ask-- so the mayor and I have spoken about this-- my only ask is that as we're looking at that, we are looking at the maintenance costs associated with doing this, right? Because they are significant. And we have incredible-- we have a couple of incredible people on our staff right now, but I want to make sure that they have the resources they need to take care of these. I'm going to leave it at that for now.
Yes, yeah, planting and thank you for that, planting and maintenance. And even to the point, you know, if we were doing a program, say, of street trees, like we've done the whole SAFE program through this area. We know we're good on our infrastructure. Now let's come back through this street and plant street trees. If we were to put in buried irrigation, because we know that we're going to be having hot, dry summers and we know that at least to establish the trees, if not even keep them alive for 100 years, we may end up having to actually irrigate them to that degree, where we're literally building in part of the maintenance, part of the caretaking of the trees as we're planting the trees. But I really do want this to be a program that we funded, that we're moving forward with very proactively.
And I will say, we're starting with the resources that we have right now and the limited dollars that we've allocated for trees. And we're using the crews that we have to start as soon as we could. So, I mean, this fall was our goal and we started planning. And yeah, in the future, we're going to grow that as resources and priorities dictate, so.
And I would just say that, you know, reaching 40% isn't really going to be possible without partnerships from the community. And we are going to require a lot of that canopy to be on private property and grown by the owners of that property. So it's just, it's not possible on the--
All in the right-of-way, yeah.
It just is not possible.
I was going to say, about 80% of the canopy is on private property.
You know, and I didn't realize when we did the Climate Action Plan and only when I looked at your package, did I realize that our 40% is really the most aggressive goal out there of the ones you quoted to us. Because Tygerd's goal is pretty similar to ours in terms of 14% to 15% increase, but they started several years ago and their end date is 2047. So ours is really, in terms of the percentage increase in the time span, it's the most aggressive of those that you gave us.
Unfortunately, we didn't start 20 years ago, which is, of course, the best time to plant a tree.
You know, the other thing that-- one of the other objectives, of course, too, is we wanted to make sure that as we do this, that the canopy that we're doing is equitable across the city. So one of the things that we've been doing as a staff-- we had a meeting with Vivek Chandis from Portland State, who's put together-- he's a professor there and is really very interested in urban forest canopy. He actually has a tool out there, a website, Branchout pdx, that you can use to look at individual parcel data using the LiDAR information to determine what your canopy coverage is. It's just for the Portland region, but it also incorporates demographic information. So income levels, housing, you know, renting information, all those sorts of things. So you can sort of identify where the areas are that you need to make sure that you're planting trees. We've got a meeting with him in the next week or so to further develop a proposal to help us do that. It's really a neat program. It really provides a lot of good information.
And going back to tree planting, I mean, that's the kind of thing people love to do. It's the kind of thing, you know, we're kind of-- unfortunately, we're probably not geared up in time to do a big tree planting because we should have done it probably November, December. But that's the kind of thing-- I mean, I've done a lot of park work parties over the years and, you know, people will come pull ivy and come pick up trash, but they really love to plant trees.
I was going to share with you. So we are working with Friends of Trees to do a planting April 13th.
Oh, really?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
As an Arbor Day event. So we've reached out to them last summer and have been working with them to develop a proposal. We're probably looking at that Harrison Strip on the other side of the 224 going up the hill and parts of those neighborhoods there to plant, so.
So, yeah, we should think about changing our Arbor Day to November or--
A more appropriate time for the trees.
Something not just about before it's dry.
So if we plant there, do we sort of try to enlist the neighbors to pledge to water for three years or whatever it is?
Absolutely. That's part of the public education and outreach component that they do. They work with the adjacent property owners to make sure that those people are going to take care of the trees that are planted there and they know how to maintain them and how frequently they need to water them. So they do that, they take care of that piece.
Oh, great, great.
And, yeah. Having that partnered up with an Arbor Day celebration is kind of a natural match. When during the year it happens is, you know, it's better in-- is it going to be April still? Yeah. And we're moving it back like two weeks from the Earth Day celebration, it sounds like, which is better. We're going in the right direction. But we can revisit that future years.
Yeah. Well, we had to work with their--
Sure. Yeah, but let's seriously look at moving our Arbor Day to a more appropriate time of the year.
And then, of course, the other thing we want to make-- we want to try to make tree planting affordable for residents in the community. So, you know, that's working with other groups and organizations to somehow provide, you know, get some of those coupons and rebates that are available for tree planting. We'd had an earlier discussion with PGE at one point to see if there was a way that they could provide some additional resources. So it didn't look very promising, though, so.
And this speaks to that partnership with private homeowners and residents. And, you know, some other regional cities like Portland have minimum tree size requirements for private property, which can often just make trees expensive. And there's, you know, debate about whether even requiring larger trees, like the growth rates are often diminished when you put a bigger tree in the ground in the first place rather than putting a smaller tree in. So there's just kind of a win-win for having a tree less time in a greenhouse and more time out actually in the ground and it's cheaper. So hopefully we can encourage, you know, and find other creative ways to make this as easy and for people to do in this town.
So I'm also concerned about not just the costs of planting, but the costs of maintenance. My anecdotal driver for that concern is having lived across the street in Portland from a woman who was quite elderly and she had four large-- I don't remember if they were horse chestnut and big leaf maple or what. But anyway, she had four very large trees. She couldn't afford the maintenance on them and so they ended up being cut down, which was-- it significantly changed the character of the neighborhood and was a big loss in a lot of ways. They may have been so old that there was nothing you could do, you know? There is such a thing as senescence for trees particularly. The big leaf maples are not long-lived. But anyway, I don't know if that has been part of your conversations yet or not.
Well, you know, tree maintenance is a concern. You know, the model that we use out here in the Pacific Northwest is a lot different than the model that I worked with in the Midwest, where the city maintains the street trees. Here, it's the adjacent property owner's responsibility. So, you know, we're looking at it from that perspective, that the public education and outreach component is very important, that we engage with the community on how to take care of the trees, how to maintain them, what to look for, how to make sure that, you know, that they take care of the tree early in its life to prevent problems from happening in the future.
Right, but I'm specifically thinking of, we have an aging population. 80% of our canopy is on private land. If people are trying to age in place and they are on a fixed income and their big tree is looking not so great, that's sort of the-- I have a fear.
We got a pretty clear message from our survey about people wanting to maintain the rights to maintain their own trees themselves. And so there was some questions prior to whether people would be, you know, want to have requirements around using certified professional arborists. And it was pretty clear that people wanted to be able to leave that option open for themselves to be able to do that work. Doesn't really answer the question, but--
I do just want to call out real fast. So we have a weatherization program that we work with the county on and it is very specifically to try and get, help people age in place and to maintain their homes. This won't be covered under that. And I've spoken with you a little bit about that. But I would like to see if we can maybe pull in Alma Flores a little bit into that discussion, just to make sure that as we're looking at any new requirements, that we are also looking at what that fallout is to private property owners who may not actually be able to afford the programming. So I'm going to use this opportunity, since Alma's in the room, just to ask that staff have that discussion so that we are making that as an educated decision.
And even if it's not new requirements--
It's just maintenance.
Yeah, it's all hands on deck for how do we keep that 80% of the canopy alive and thriving? That's all. And how do we do that without burdening the most burdened population in our city?
I was going to say, there may be some forum, you know, I don't know, but there may be some forum through which arborists donate time. You know, there may be some way to get some low-cost arborist, professional arborist assistance for people.
Well, and one of the things we talked about in the Climate Change Action Plan was-- committee was, can the city use its purchasing power to bid on, you know, getting those kinds of services citywide? And then we offer them at some sort of discount to citizens. So I don't have the answer. I just have the concern and a feeling like we have a missing piece of the puzzle there.
And it is one that I'm not sure that government, as government, can solve. Yeah, it may be, but it would be something like our utility billing, where we actually have a fund that pays for that type of service. So it's just something to be aware of. I do think it's probably a disproportionate number of people in our community right now, just as we're seeing the changes in our own community and the people that I'm hearing from. I would encourage us to think about that in the programming.
Yeah, perhaps like the LIHEAP program?
Yeah.
Maybe there's a way to set up a program to order that now. That would be funded internally somehow from some perspective.
Magically.
So one of the other things we wanted-- one of the other objectives, too, was to promote sustainable design insight development. And I think earlier this afternoon, talking about the-- I can't think of the name of--
Hillside.
What's that?
Hillside.
Hillside Manor, yes. The Hillside Manor piece. So I had the opportunity to participate in those sustainability-- the Sustainability Charette and one of the other charets. And, you know, we talked about that sustainable design and trying to, you know, maintain the trees there and plant new trees, integrate trees into that built environment. So doing things like that, we want to make sure that we're promoting that as a government.
So I had an idea when I was reading this about-- you know, I mean, I know the tree cutting in Mission Park was very painful for a lot of people, also over on King Road and 42nd. The silver lining is that in those areas now, the utilities are underground, which means we can plant bigger trees. You know, we're not limited to the list of the trees that you're supposed to plant under utility lines. It did occur to me that, you know, we've got a planter strip that's, you know, between the sidewalk and the street that's not often wide enough to facilitate really big trees, like the oak trees that we really should be planting. But, and this will get to one of the mayor's favorite things, is we talk about in other contexts, you know, the, you know, promoting walkability and promoting traffic calming by curving, by having, you know, bulbous and chicanes. And so maybe we need to be thinking about our street design so that we, for these new neighborhoods, so that there are actually bulbous that are big enough to plant a oak tree in and that also serve as a traffic calming measure, you know, things like that. I mean, I do think we have some opportunities in all these Hillside and the new, you know, the Murphy and McFarland, all the places where the utilities are going to be buried, we definitely have some opportunity to, you know, grow bigger trees than a lot of average Milwaukee frontages can grow.
And I thought it was encouraging to see the numbers on that in the feedback that we have from here, support for exactly that, sacrificing parking, you know, on-street parking for planting trees. I mean, that was one of the items that bubbled up and that was encouraging to see. I'm a little-- I don't want us to rely too much on the really high numbers of support for the private, you know? I think that that's great, but they're often couched by sort of like the open-ended comments that immediately follow. It sounds like when people say that, they really have developers in mind in those projects, you know, the ones where all the trees came out essentially. And I think that once we really get into the code, I think we're going to find that those numbers fall back significantly when people realize, oh, you're talking about my tree. So I just want to make sure that we're--
Well, and that gets to--
Heading into this clear-eyed and--
Yeah, well, I guess that gets to sort of what Ann opened with and what the purpose of this document is. So to me, this is a great document for the Tree Board's work plan. But I guess to me, it's not something that is ready for us to adopt as our policy until we've had wider discussion of some of-- I mean, because it says we will require-- we will move toward requiring permits for removal of trees on private property. And I don't think we've had the public--
I wonder, though, if-- well, getting back to what Ann said, I mean, I'm thinking of this as similar to the Housing Affordability Strategic Plan, which we did adopt. And it does talk about strategies. We haven't adopted those strategies. We haven't vetted, we haven't actually come up with the code that's going to-- and that's where I-- I mean, that's how I think of something like this. And tell me if I shouldn't be thinking about it that way.
No, I think it's, we're getting some really good direction here also, so I appreciate that. This is a draft document and I think that we can amend it further. We're not asking for you to adopt it tonight. So one of the things I really appreciated that Alma did was that she talked about how, a lot of her terminology was investigate the option of, right? So it was very specifically like, we're going to have a discussion, we're going to do further work. And then we're going to bring it to you guys throughout that process. When we get to that item, we're going to talk about each of those pieces and then you can decide, based on the feedback you get, whether or not you want to adopt. And that's how her work plan is drafted. I think that that's been the intent for Peter, based on our conversations, is that that's how, that's the intentionality of this. And I think we can give you something a little clearer with that verbiage, just to make sure that everyone's comfortable when we bring you the final for adoption, if you're okay with that. And I'm also looking at, yeah, Andy's--
Yeah.
Yeah, Andy, too.
I mean, that's what makes sense. We couldn't possibly adopt something like this without going through that. For each one of these--
These are really big lifts, each one of them. And they include funding, too, right? There's pieces in there that are each one individually big lift. So I think that that's the feedback I'm hearing from you. If there's disagreement on that feedback, let us know. But we will come back to you with another draft that actually sort of susses that up.
Sure.
I'm sorry, Peter, I started that.
No, that's fine, it's good. That's what we're here for tonight. So one of the other focus areas that we had was our age and species diversity component. So we want to make sure that we've got a good range of trees, species, and-- make sure that we've got a good range of trees, species, and as well as in that spectrum of age. From my experience back in the Midwest, we had a lot of ash trees, green ash trees in our, in our community.
Yeah.
Street trees. The Air Force Base, that was part of the community. That's primarily, all they planted were ash trees along the street and maybe in some sycamores. So in 2009, we had the Emerald Ash Bore come in, into the community, and it devastated all those, all those streetlights. Changed, changed the look of the community. You know, fortunately, we realized, probably around 2003 or '04, because they were in Michigan, and they were talking, hey, these are, these are coming your way. So we started planting trees. And we started planting trees, you know, sort of in between to replace, replace those trees. But we want to make sure that we were, were not at risk for those invasive pests that will wipe out, you know, the entire street.
Single species.
They came in on our Christmas trees this year, yeah.
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 So we want to make sure that we, you know, we're managing our, our, our urban forest for species diversity and, and age diversity. I know Kathy, you'd had a, a comment about serial planting or planting the same species. And we, I had a subsequent conversation with, with Denny today about that, doing that down in the downtown as well, because some of the, the planting standards downtown say, you know, this, this tree only on this block.
So does it still? Because we went through a whole process.
In the par.
Five, six years ago. And we did a whole brand-new downtown planting plan, which included at each of the intersections, that there would be a large bulbout where we would plant a large species tree, oaks, bald cypress, if it was going to be a, a water.
Retention.
Retention area. And that in between those, it was very small species of trees that wouldn't even, you know, be touching the buildings, let alone going into the power lines. So is that not in the standards right now for downtown?
Uh, it's not in the.
That's what we were looking at today here.
In the pars. That's.
But the actual tree list was amended, yeah, like 2013.
All of that was part of, and there was a new tree list that went in.
There were about six, six to eight trees that were identified.
Were there sunset maples in that list?
There, there was a, there was a maple in the list.
Then it's not the right list. So can, can, I know this can be a pain, but from back when Miller and, you know, the original council I was on, we did this whole process with two arborists and the, and the engineering director.
Jason Rice, yeah.
And all these people, and we adopted it. And it appears to have just vanished.
By, by resolution?
I don't remember. I don't remember the process we used to adopt it.
We were looking at the, the P A R document, and it was, I think it's dated 2005.
Yeah.
Yeah, that would have been probably original. But yeah, this was 2013.
A revision to that.
So look at, yeah, 12, 13, somewhere in there.
13, 14, because then Lisa and Karen and I came on in 15.
Right.
Yeah, it was before that.
There's a two-year window that that happened in. If, if you don't find it, look in, in the engineering standards, because that's where Jason was also supposed to put it.
The Public Works Standards?
We're, we're pretty certain they're not in the Public Works Standards, which is where, they're, they're, one of the things we do have, as Peter's pointing out, is this confusing list of street trees that need to be sorted out and, and.
We did, we spent, I can't tell you how many meetings going through that.
Just for downtown. They didn't do citywide.
It was just downtown. Because at the time, we were having a lot of sidewalk bunkling, a lot of people complaining. And, and the city itself hadn't planted those trees, but the mayor and one of the councilors and a whole other group of people that were, you know, seen as the city, did plant all those trees.
And Dark Horse Comics has talked about that list. So they, at least for participants.
They were involved, yes.
Right, they were. So it was.
Neil was part of that group.
It was, there was a process in which it was adopted. I just don't know what that process looks like. We'll find out.
Okay.
So one of the actions that's identified in the plan is revisiting the tree list in general. And so, and beyond just downtown. So we'd like to look at that as well at some point. And there's interest on the Tree Board to, to do that work.
Yeah, and that, and that, that actually speaks to the next piece. We want to, you know, strengthen our resilience, to make sure that, you know, we recognize that some trees that may be native, or that we think of native now, may not be native 50 years from now because of the, because of the changing climate. And so, you know, we're looking at trees that, that may be, that are native further south to see how they, they may play a role in our, in our community in the future. Julian has been taking a look at that and doing some work with the Arboretum to help identify some trees that may be better suited for the future here in the community.
I would bet that OSU's doing some of that.
Just gonna say, yeah.
And also the Soil and Water Conservation Districts too, yeah.
And the World Forestry Center has been doing a little bit as well. I think probably more, mostly consulting with OSU, but because they run tree farms, they are looking into that.
The other, the other piece was the, another piece was the Forest Health. So, you know, make, make sure that we're maintaining our trees in a healthy condition. You know, we're taking care of the trees, making sure their water's being maintained properly. During development, that we are going through the, the process to make sure developers and, put together plans to provide protection for trees that are, that they're going to preserve. And then that we audit that, that we go out there and check.
And speaking with Leila of Community Development about her experiences around the library and the process for protecting the trees on that property because it's in a natural resource overlay area. So she just said that the process that they had to go through, she thought was rigorous, but she just had a good impression of how that worked. And so that's the type of process that we'd like to see, you know, around the city in general, something similar to that. Maybe not exactly, but, so.
So Mayor, just so you know, we did find that list, and we're printing it for you guys right now. It's from 1214.
So is it not, is it just the list, or does it also talk about the?
The bulbout.
The bulbouts on the corners and.
This is just the list, but we can find you the rest. But it is, we did adopt it as a street ple, tree, street tree planting list for six to eight-foot planter strips. And it looks like, and, yeah, actually, it does call for which ones can be in what type of, of street. So it's undeveloped roadside planter strips.
That's the stru, that's the street tree, though.
Downtown plantings.
Downtown.
Yeah, each page is different.
Yeah.
So it's six pages, all with different planting areas, including power lines and the whole thing.
Was it 2010?
14.
It had to be 13 or 14.
Yeah.
There's a public education and outreach component to this and making sure that the, the members of the community know how to maintain and take care of their trees. And encouraging them to use arborists to, to help with tree care work. The, the next focus area was on street tree management. You know, we really want to try to maximize the benefits of those trees and minimize conflicts with our existing infrastructure or, or future infrastructure in, within right-of-way. We want to be able to start, consider, maintain, manage trees as, as a green, as green infrastructure, manage them as an asset, identify where we plant trees, where we're planting the new trees. Julian's been doing that, GPSing where we're putting the trees. And we're putting that, putting that information into our asset management database, our City Works software that we have to start keeping track of those trees, so we can manage them. I had mentioned earlier, we want to make sure that we are planning, proactively plan for mature, mature tree preservation and new tree planting as part of public infrastructure projects. And when I, when I say proactively plan, just make sure that, you know, we're, we're considering trees early in, in, in the project design. And it's not an afterthought at the end of, oh, we've, you know, we forgot about the trees, what are we going to do? So consider those trees early, what we're doing with the big trees early on, make sure we identify those conflicts and, and, and take care of those. And then when we can't preserve those trees, identify new planting opportunities, whether that's onsite or, or offsite. And then just increase, you know, the clarity within the public, what's their roles and responsibilities on street tree maintenance. There's still some, some issue there, so.
And that's from feedback from the survey. We just got a lot of people, you know, not knowing what the right-of-way was. And, and, you know, we probably could have been clearer on that. But also just some respondents generally not knowing that they were responsible for the trees that are along the right-of-way. So I think there's room for, for some public engagement around that issue.
Yeah, this is, we're, we're running into this not only around trees, but as we start to do the SAFE program, people not understanding what's right-of-way and what's their front yard. It sounds like that could be a significant PR outreach thing that we do, where we reach out to people and help them try and figure out where their property ends, where the right-of-way is. And here's your responsibilities around that, regarding snow, regarding trees, regarding all the things, right? Because I think people just lose track. And some, particularly new homeowners, the first-time homeowners, homeowners have no idea about any of this.
Yeah. In places where we're doing the SAFE program, that's happening naturally. I mean, we have to have those conversations. In places where we aren't, that, this is a significant staffing issue, just to make sure that everybody is up to date. We could have a discussion about putting something in the pilot. It doesn't get things out to every homeowner per se from them seeing this as a notice about their yard in particular. But I have no problem putting it into the pilot and having that discussion.
And maybe some photos or, you know, some test story of like, yeah, this isn't actually so-and-so's right-of-way, or so-and-so's yard, where they.
Simplistic things, like, you know, your property starts at the back of the sidewalk, not at the front.
Right.
Not at the street.
Well, and in some cases, that may not be, yeah, in some places, that may not be the case. In some places, we may have easements, and other places, we may actually own, right? Like, so there, there are nuances throughout the city that I, I can't make a bold statement and say every city's going to be treated, or every parcel is treated X. On the SAFE projects, I think it's going to get easier, right? Because it's really simple for me to say either I've, I've worked it out with you to go onto your private property to go around the tree, or to go around the other thing. But it, it's just, it's going to be more complicated than that.
Yeah.
Unfortunately.
I was told that the right-of-way in my property was behind the water meter in the front yard. Is that, because you couldn't put up political signs in the right-of-way.
Really? How did you learn that?
Tim told me that.
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
The water meter should be in the right-of-way, right?
Yeah, it is.
That's a general rule, that should be the case.
So he said, behind, behind the.
It is in some neighborhoods. In the neighborhoods that, the older, in historic, where the sidewalks are built, the water meter's actually in your yard.
Is it, oh, is it?
Yeah, so that's.
Mine is way far out, like, from where my boundary ends. So it's not even safe to stay behind it.
Yeah, mine is, yeah, mine's way out in the street.
Yeah.
Well, I can pretty much guarantee I had political signs in the right-of-way, totally accidentally, because this is the first I've heard of it.
Well, that, see, and that's just my neighborhood. So it could be totally different somewhere else.
You know, managing the right-of-way and easements that the, that a community has, it's really important to be aggressive in making sure that, that you're not allowing encroachments, especially where, where, where they may affect utility, utility work. You know, I, I know from my experience, we were very aggressive because of, with our electric utility and managing even the easements and making sure people didn't plant certain, certain trees or shrubs on, on easements, or, or build structures or sidewalks or anything like that. And if, and if they did, they, we would have to remove it. But it's, it's difficult. And you get, you get people that get quite upset because that's how their property's been for quite a while, so. You know, the, the next area was centralizing our, the management of our urban forest. So last spring, one of the things that we did was restructure our landscape workers' job descriptions and, and change them to natural resources technicians. So Julian is now a natural resource coordinator. Part of his job description requires him to have, be a licensed arborist, certified arborist. So he's a certified arborist. And, and Sanus as well. That's sort of like that career path is, is not, is helping to take care of our trees and our other natural resources that we have in our, in our urban area, our, our other green infrastructure, water quality facilities and things like that. You know, one of the things that we've realized this past summer is our water quality facilities, the amount of watering that we have to do to maintain the, the vegetation in those stormwater facilities so they don't die from, from the droughts. So, you know, that ties back to that climate action piece, making sure that we're being smart about what we're planning in those, in those facilities to make sure that they're, they're tolerant of the, of the changing climate. But we spend a lot of time watering our stormwater facilities.
Well, I mean, I put in a sidewalk and I had to water, I still water the ferns, even like five, I guess I'm four or five years in now. And I still water the ferns. But the, most of it after like, three years, it was, two years, it was, it was drought tolerant. But yeah, the ferns are a tough one to put in the water quality.
I guess that's because you're, that's south-facing right there?
Yeah.
Because I've got some north-facing, they, they just grow like weeds out of rocks all over the place.
Yeah, no, they're baking against the pavement.
The, I, I wanted to ask you a really quick question. So all of the new trees, did he, were those the ones that he was, we talked about this last year, maybe?
That's one that he planted.
Was, yeah. Were those the ones he was propagating kind of in different places around the city? And then did he move them? And?
Yes.
Yeah?
Yeah.
That's awesome.
Well, if he needs more Deodoro Cedars, I have tons of them. He's welcome to come dig them.
Yeah, this is one he planted, this was on the slope last Thursday. So, you know, one of the other objectives that we identified was trying to secure ongoing funding for future urban forestry work. We talked a little bit about that with our forest size goal as well, that, hey, we need to develop a way, a sustainable, sustainable funding mechanism for our urban forestry work. Right now, we're, we've tied and linked the work that we're doing to our stormwater utility. There's a, a very direct link to trees and stormwater quality and, you know, reducing runoff and providing that sort of benefit. So we've linked that, from that perspective. But we want to look and identify other potential means to, to, to fund that work, to include going out to get grants and, and identifying, perhaps establishing a tree fund that we can use to, to, to put that money for that work.
And so, right now, you know, we, there's a permitting system for right-of-way tree removals and, and pruning. And the thought is that, you know, that's some sort of income related to, related to tree maintenance, that we could, you know, direct that and dog ear that for future. tree maintenance, that we could, you know, direct that and dog ear that for future forestry work in the city, so.
Something, it's not nearly enough.
No, but it's that type of idea. And also if there were ever, you know, there was ever a new code that, there was mitigation measures that you could pay into a tree fund as an option for not being able to, you know, be out of compliance with some standard or something like that. So there's options there to, and that helps, you know, make standards and new regulations more flexible also, so.
Well, and I hope we can get some help from the state once we have whatever the carbon pricing initiative ends up being at the state level, but hopefully some of those dollars might be made available to local communities that are working to preserve their urban forest canopy.
And then some of the other objectives that I have, that I have here that are related to the development review process and resolution of conflicts, you know, those are really sort of just making sure that we formalize those things or maybe making some slight improvements to the processes that we already have in place, identifying planning goals and future development, what we'd like to see in terms of canopy, those sorts of things, while maintaining flexibility as well. And then, of course, making sure that we're planting the trees in the right, the right tree in the right place, that, you know, unfortunately, planting trees under the power line just is never the right place to plant a tree. And you can see some really problematic trees here.
Are they badly pruned trees?
Yeah, badly pruned.
Well, and actually, that was one thing, I don't know that you'll ever get, make any headway, but I fight with PG&E's tree people every couple of years when they come through. And I get, I mean, luckily, the trees on my property aren't so butchered, but I get that they have to cover, cut back what's over it because it's going to flop down and it's going to grow, but they cut an awful lot that's under it. They cut an awfully wide swath under it that I, you know, I'm like, why do you have to cut that under it? What's it going to do? But anyway, I mean, I do think they go overboard in how much they do, but I don't know if there's any way of making headway with them.
Yeah, that's a tough one.
In their eyes, the utility is number one priority, so.
Well, I mean, there's certain reliability requirements that they have.
Sure. Well, and we were out of, much of Island Station had no power for 11 hours last weekend or two weekends ago, so we know.
And coming from the city manager who calls them when we're out for three days over and over and over again, there's, I do to an extent understand their fear.
Yeah.
And then our last focus area is outreach and stewardship component. You know, the Tree Board has really spent a lot of time over the last year in outreach events and communicating with the community about the importance of trees. You know, the picture up here you see was from our Climate Action Summit. We had a few members from the Tree Board there doing, tabling, tabling the event and being there to talk to community members about trees. That's just one of the little events that they've gone to. Linda, Linda's gone to, I think, many of the farmers markets events and been out there promoting the work that the Tree Board's really, and, yeah, they're very interested in the outreach piece and enjoy doing that work. Julian spent a lot of time doing outreach as well, related to trees and stormwater. And then Natalie will be doing some as well. She's been, I had mentioned earlier, she's working on updating our urban forest website with our web managers. So just making sure that we're clearly communicating our goals and objectives to the community and making sure that there's an easy place to find information about the urban forest. One of the other things that we had identified in here is we wanted to try to recognize and protect our outstanding and historic trees in the community and develop a heritage tree program. A lot of the Tree Board members felt that that was important, so that was one of the items that we were going to work on as well. I don't know if you had anything on that?
We've, you know, looked into it pretty extensively as a board and we really like the model that the city of Portland has where, you know, they have a tree code where heritage trees are really called out and protected and from removals through the normal permitting process that you would otherwise use. And so then whenever removals or, you know, maintenance or there's any work that needs to be done on the, on heritage tree, you do talk to Portland Urban Forestry. And trees are, you know, nominated and they can be anywhere in the city, but if it's going to be on a private landowner's property, then that landowner needs to agree and consent to that tree being, you know, nominated. So, you know, the landowner has the ultimate say whether that tree becomes a heritage tree or not. Then, once it is, it would be, you know, included on the deed of that property going forward, so when the property changes hands, the new owner can't just decide that, I don't want a heritage tree on my property anymore, I'm going to cut it down. So there would be that ongoing protection once it gets nominated, so that's what Portland does. We seem to think that there's a lot of good parts to that, so just food for thought for now, so.
And it comes with, I mean, you can't just nominate a little sapling, you have, there are other criteria.
Right. I guess we, you know, Portland doesn't have any strict criteria written out, like it needs to be X size, anything like that, it's, that it has to pass through varying, you know, bodies who approve it, as in like you guys, you know, so, you know.
I think we'd want some more objectives.
Yeah, no, for sure.
I don't know, I kind of like the idea of nominating a sapling on your property and then that means you guarantee that tree's life in perpetuity. I didn't say that on record, did I?
Yep. I also have a couple of tree things that I just want to talk about tonight before we get off of this topic, so before we move to the next agenda item, now's a good time. Do you have any more slides, Peter? Do you have a couple?
I had one or two slides.
Okay, go for it.
So I just wanted to point out here too, we wanted to make sure that we're talking to the community about how stormwater management's linked to our urban forest, to make sure that there's an understanding there, or a better understanding of that. And then our Tree City USA piece, so we've been Tree City USA two years now. I submitted the application in December. Last year, the per capita was around $2.80 per capita that we spent. This year, in the application, was around $6.80.
Wow.
A lot of that has to do with the restructuring of, within Public Works on how we're using Julian, some of his work, some of the investments that we've made in the budget in the past year, identifying some additional dollars for tree planting as part of the, as part of the budget. So, yeah, work that we did on our community engagement outreach piece as well.
And I just want to add that we also have like actions on outreach and stewardship that speak to the importance of engaging the community about all, you know, tree code development changes. And so, you know, having a back and forth and not just, you know, finding out what the community wants, that's really important, but also making sure that the community's informed and, you know, empowered to, you know, really make the most and use those changes. So, yeah, kind of a back and forth dialogue and, yeah.
With that, I mean, those were the, that's the, that was the basis of the urban forest management plan. There is an implementation guide that's part of that plan as well. I think we also provided you the community engagement outreach analysis that we had done. Do you have any further questions?
I have a couple of comments and it's actually on one of those other two pieces. So on page RS80 of the packet, under action, in the, it says, "New trees will be planted at densities appropriate to the surrounding infrastructure. The city will consider creative solutions such as bump outs, chicanes, and on-street parking modifications to achieve these standards." I'd like to replace the word "consider" with "utilize" whenever possible. Considered is, I considered it. Done. Check that box.
Didn't require any action.
No. It's no teeth in "consider."
So I just want to clarify, so we had talked at one point in the meeting that this document was going to be leading towards those types of policies, and I just want to make sure that I'm clear.
And throughout, we're going to be looking at this language.
Absolutely.
A new draft, so.
But I'm throwing in input.
No, no, I'm great with input, I just want to make sure that everybody knows that in terms of, this isn't a policy adoption.
Right. Right. And we already talked about sort of figuring out how much this will cost to actually achieve this goal and then starting to work on that. And then something I just wanted to have a conversation about because it struck me. I always, when I'm working on code, working on policy, I try and imagine that policy in 10 years with a completely different council, a completely different city manager, a completely different public works director, completely, you know, all new people. And in this particular instance, with this city manager and this public works director, having all of this under the public works director is the absolutely perfect place to do it. I've known other public works directors and I wouldn't want them in charge of my trees. So as a conversation about, is that the best way or how do we protect for the future?
Yeah, so I think the only language that I would say is that it should be at the discretion of the city manager because it is an assignment that they would make. It's within their portfolio. So I wouldn't actually support putting in public works for the reason that you're giving, but a future city manager can put it wherever they feel like it's appropriate.
And I do see, I mean, there's a lot of language in here that calls out how much this, this program's success relies upon integration with planning and engineering and public works.
And it should.
And it absolutely should, so I really appreciate that that language is in there and I just see that as an additional check and balance system in that scenario, potentially.
I need more clarification. So, I'm sorry, when you say that you see it as a check and balance, you would say...
I'm saying it's, there's lots of people who are looking at these sorts of decisions, that's all.
Okay.
It's not just one department that is making all of the calls.
No, I appreciate that, thank you.
That's all I had.
I just wanted to, I mean, I think, you know, this is, maybe this will just become a theme because I didn't, now, we were going to talk about this in goal setting in a couple of years, right? We all sort of agreed on that, but I appreciate that it was called out, that we're not reaching a representative group in our public outreach. We've seen this in other projects and this is, this is just, this is just something that we need to work on and improve. So I would just like to, you know, I'm glad that that was recognized in this one, I'm glad that it was called out in easily, you know, you could see it in the charts, you could see that the majority of the respondents earn much more income than the average, you know, Milwaukeeian. And I think that we just need, we need to, we need to be thinking about that, we need to work on that, not just, you know, all of us as a city, big C, little c, we need to, we need to, we need to, that's something we have to focus on soon, soon.
So what's the timeline on an actual tree code, given all of the outreach that still needs to be done and all that stuff? I get concerned that, you know, development is continuing apace and we still don't have anything that...
So we've, I mean, we've certainly worked on some language, draft language that follows this path of the code or path of what's in this plan.
Peter, can you get closer?
Oh, I'm sorry. We've worked on language in the code to make updates based off of this document, drafts that we've, we've talked with, had some workshops with Denny to talk about some things related to land use. And we've worked on some of the other components related to public tree management and how we manage trees, as well as some of the, some of the private pieces. We just really haven't, we haven't firmed up what that language is, what the details are, but we've identified that, hey, there was, we wanted to provide some additional protection and preservation measures for, on private property and identified some different methods to do that. The idea was from here, as we got additional feedback, we'd make, we'd refine this plan and then put together a couple of different packages of updates, maybe two to three packages, maybe one that focuses strictly on the public component and then one that focuses perhaps just on the private piece and then a separate one that might be on the land use that would need to go through the planning commission component as well. So those are sort of three packages, maybe two to three, maybe the private and the development one as one component, with the opportunity for engagement with the community of what we were doing and the board as well as we progress down that way. That was the idea.
And so...
Can we get you, oh, sorry, go for it.
I was just going to build on what Peter said and, you know, we have a lot of code written and like for some things, we really were able to build off of the right of way permitting system that we already have in place, which is great. And we know that, you know, it may not be perfect the way it's working right now, but it's in place and familiar and so code language around that, for private property for instance, was pretty easy in terms of being able to build off of that. The development piece, we've been having those conversations with planning and we've made serious ground, I think, and we've kind of presented a kind of draft, just real high level, this is what a development tree code could look like, some new requirements around, you know, planning for trees and reserving a certain amount of space on each lot as your tree area where, you know, you'd be required to plant a certain number of trees, given the amount of square footage of that space. And so we've been advancing those conversations like through the fall and, yeah, we have flushed those out a little bit more and a lot of it was just seeing what, you know, this council is comfortable with in the plan document as we kind of talk around that before we start, you know, going too far in any one direction.
And certainly this plan is to sort of set those boundaries of the path of, on those different components of the, of the code. So, yeah, we were looking certainly for the feedback here from council and on the plan and then looking to get some additional feedback from the community as well.
We're going to get you a date. We'll get you sort of a timeframe, but I'd like to sit down and have a discussion. We've become really pretty good at creating robust engagement around some of these nuttier issues. I'd like to sit down with a few of the staff who've really gone through that process with Peter and me, just to make sure that we're thinking through what we feel like we need to do in order for you to feel like you've heard from the community. So we'll do a little of that, we'll be in touch, but I think it's a great question and we can work on that immediately.
Okay.
Can I give my other two now? Okay. Number one is, there was a discussion at the BCC discussion about the role of Earth Day versus Arbor Day, and I wanted to let you know that staff actually have met and they've separated those into two events. The Arbor Day event is going to be run by Peter and his team and the Earth Day event will be, continue to be out of the city manager's office, so those will be separated events, but we just wanted to pass that on to you. The second thing that I wanted to talk a little bit about is that we have a heritage tree that we're doing a lot of work to try and protect right now, and I wanted to give you an update on that. you an update on that real fast, which is the library. We have been within the designs, so we had scoped it out, and I'm saying this because when you start trenching, people start going, "Yeah, ah." So, I wanted to make sure everybody knew that they are within the Arborist Design stamp drawings. It doesn't mean that I'm thrilled. It means that we, we have more work to do. We have intended to do more work. I really appreciate Peter's team. We're looking at taking some additional sites and steps immediately on that site, just to make sure that we're maximizing the health of the tree. And Julian's been a big part of that, so I really appreciate him coming out. One of the other pieces that we're looking at is just how we can continue those mitigation efforts on that site. So, staff will probably be coming back to you in the coming months with, basically, around how sidewalks, or what that looks like, and trying to minimize the impact to the rest of the base, the tree base. So, it's coming up in the community. I wanted to say it online, on air, that we are working on that. We are watching it. We are having multiple meetings a week, actually, about the tree, to try and make sure that we're doing everything we can. And so, I just wanted to put that out there tonight. Okay, thank you. If you, if you have specific questions, you're welcome to talk to Peter, or to me, or to Leila. All of the three of us are in the middle of those discussions.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys, very much.
Thank you.
It was a pleasure to read this. It really was a...
Can we take a break?
Yes. I'll take a five-minute recess. Five minutes?
Sure.
Canada only be five minutes? I mean, can we stick?
Six or eight years now.
Before we could just move downstairs.
You think it's going to be warmer?
No, it's going to be awful.
Yeah, I'm sure it's...
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
No. The fire bay is super warm.
Isn't that they're just prepping us for the garage and stuff?
They're trying to build up our...
Heat sinks, right?
Our tolerance.
Yeah.
Heat sinks.
Yeah.
Can I just rewrite the laws of physics before we do this move?
A little bit.
These are bigger than my little ones, so it's going to last me for the rest of the month.
Oh, is it? Okay, good. It's the only one I had. I have like three on my nightstand, but I haven't needed them.
We're on air.
Yes.
I can work standing up.
All right. Go for it. We're back on.
Okay, so my item is the 2019 Local and Regional Committee Assignments List. If it's okay with you all, I'm going pretty low-tech on this one. I have my hard copy draft that I can capture edits on here, and I'll just reference page numbers. I do have a set of tweaks that I've noticed I needed to make while I've been sitting here, and a couple of questions for you all. So, I'll just go page by page, and I'll ask my questions, and you all can tell me if you have any additional changes. I did do a fairly wholesale shift from Shane to Kathy, just in terms of name swapping. So, that did occur. But beyond that, it's your conversation to had tonight about, is everyone in the right places? And also, if I've missed a committee, which is possible. So, the first one I wanted to chat quickly about is the Audit Committee. So, one quick edit is, I'm going to take recently off, the City of Milwaukee recently created an Audit Committee. Seems like we've had it for a while now. I'm going to delete that. I have subbed in Kathy for Shane, so that's the main change there.
We're basically the same person.
Yeah.
Even Shane.
Does that seem...
Well, you couldn't be anybody better, that's for sure. So, there you go. That's cool.
I actually don't have any other highlights for you all on this page.
Oh, that's pretty basic.
That's on page one.
Okay. Okay, we go to page two. I also, I have one small edit on the Clackamas County Coordinating Committee. There's an errant one, there's a duplicative one, and then the number one, I'm going to delete that. But other than that, I don't have any proposed changes to this page.
So, I had a question about the Clackamas County Budget Committee. I mean, Will does on that, but she's not on that because of being a city councillor, right?
Correct.
So, I mean...
That's true. Should I...
Should it even be on this list?
I don't know. I mean, it's on there because I do come back and report, and I have discussions, and sometimes even with some of the rest of us, about some of the things they're talking about, or some of the things that are going on, or how they do certain things on their budget committee, which helps us with ours, or hinders it, one or two, whatever.
Well, and I do have a question on that. So, we, and we received feedback both directions. This tool is just used by you. It's not something that we really use other than this discussion. In one case, it's a reflection of the work that an individual is doing, if we include things like the Budget Committee and other things where you've been assigned, even if it's not an appointment. The second is that it's not an assignment. So, we can expand the list, but you're correct that we can actually fill some of those seats if they're not filled. So, as long as we're all aware of that, that's great.
Yeah. Yeah, and this is one that, I mean, if it weren't me, it wouldn't necessarily be somebody else from City Council.
Yep. Right. Should I?
So, it's just part of the activity that I do in community that, well, at the same time, helps promote the City of Milwaukee, because they know that's where I come from.
It would be nice if, if they were, I don't know, put an asterisk, or whatever.
Some sort of designation.
Some sort of designation.
That these are not actually...
Yeah, that we wouldn't be appointing somebody else if that person fell on our doing.
Right. So, and if we follow that through too, then the other thing that we should probably do is to add, like, Celebrate Milwaukee, and put Lisa's name down there, because it's the same type of situation.
So, the Parks Foundation, then?
Yep.
Right, so then Rotary and...
Okay, this is going to get really long.
Yeah.
Now, we're getting into Rotary, too, so I just want to...
Whatever way you guys want to do it, if you want to, I mean, you know, if you want to take off Clackamas County Budget Committee, that's fine. I think, but I agree, I think one of the reasons we have some of these things on here is just, I mean, because, like, nobody else would replace Mark on the mayor's group, because it's a mayor's group, you know. I know that's a little bit different, but in a sense, you know, similar, but...
Can I offer a suggestion here? On a couple other, a couple other squares, we actually have who appoints. So, right now, I have this structured in a way that makes it look like we make a decision to appoint this, and we don't. So, I would take the, I would, I would make a note, similar to some of the other ones, that say the county appoints.
That it's appointed by Clackamas County Commissioners.
That'd be great. Because when I was looking through this as, as a newbie, I, it was not entirely clear to me, and I had to read it a couple times, go, "Okay, I think I understand."
And I would... This is just my life. It's the way it's always been, all of these kind of things.
I guess I would argue that the Budget Committee for Clackamas County is slightly different than either CMI or the Parks Foundation, because it's controlling the budget of two of our special districts. I mean, it has West and NCPRD, so there are, there's some budgetary connections for the city related to that budget as well. So, I would, I would, I guess, advocate if y'all are okay, if I can clarify the appointment piece, that we would leave it on the list.
What you've got on there, that it's a citizen-based committee appointed by the Clackamas County Commissioners, so...
Yeah, I think, when you get into the CE4, I'll show you, there's a couple where it shows that who's on there, but it makes it clear that we don't appoint it.
Like, their appointment to MPAC is not something we have anything, any control over. It's done by the members.
I just want to say, I heard Ann say this is an internal document. I don't know that we need to spend this much time on it.
Yeah, I don't... Let's hope it doesn't make that much difference to anybody anywhere. It's not anything worth having a prolonged discussion about.
Yeah, and for that reason, I'm okay. I'm okay with having things on here or not having them on here.
Whatever.
If people want to add things so that, I mean, it's now part of our packet, you know, it's part of this conversation.
Well, I think it helps to know what everybody else is involved in.
And I'm fine with that, but I'm also fine with not having those things on there, so...
Sure, exactly. Yeah.
Great.
Okay.
Any other changes to page two?
So, are we on three?
Okay. Page three. My main question here is, I, I actually don't know the status of the Clackamas County Mayor and Chairs, so there's some question marks. So, is there any information? Is that group, is that still meeting? Do you want it on here? Where can I, do you have any more?
It's still on my calendar.
What's that? I didn't...
You have a monthly, you have a regular meeting, apart from your Metro Mayors?
Yes. And this was something, so this arose out of all the whining on CE4 about, we're talking about stuff that's not strictly on CE4's charter to talk about. We should do that in a separate group.
Oh, is that, yeah.
It's been happening at the Oregon City Library, and for whatever reason, being run by Dan Holliday. So, it tends to be just Dan Holliday bitching about stuff he's upset about, like sewer, or whatever.
Yeah, you got it. There it is.
It sort of fizzled, but Bernard talked about doing, continuing to have, in essence, that meeting, because he felt like there was some value in it. But I think he's planning to have that happen on his campus, and have, I don't know. So, it's a little bit...
Squishy.
Nebulous.
In flux right now, I guess, is the best way to...
And it says "and Chairs." Doesn't it mean just singular chair, the chair of the governor question?
Yes. Mayors and Chair.
Yeah.
I'm going to, I'll keep it.
Which is different from the Mayors and City Managers meeting.
Right.
And Chair.
I can keep it in here. I'm going to add the location as currently being at the Oregon City Library.
Okay.
I'm going to add a focus topic that says topics that fall outside the scope of CE4. And then I'm going to leave, there's no real governing authority for it. It's kind of ad hoc. And then I'll, and we'll just leave it. Okay. Does anyone else have any changes to anything on page three? Okay. On to page four. On page four, I noticed I had accidentally an earlier draft that I had emailed to you all failed to include the Community Action Board. So, I did add it. However, I didn't put the 2019 appointees in there. So, my question is, is it still you with Yelena as the, as the person who goes? Is that correct?
Yep.
Okay. So, I'm going to add that information in here, so that that section is complete. Any changes to the remaining of page four?
Do we ever hear anything back on that Community Action Board? Because there used to be, when Barbara Leorlaugh was doing that, she gave us notes, and we passed them through City Council. But I haven't seen anything since she left.
Elena sends stuff. Elena does it electronically, and sends it to me, and every now and then, I remember to forward it all to you, and then there's times I don't.
Well, maybe just ask Elena to send it to the City Council.
There you go. Yeah. I'd be ready to do it.
Okay, page five. I have a question about Kellogg for Coho.
That's not really a...
One question?
Is it? I don't, I mean, I've been here a year now, and I haven't been to a committee meeting for that. But I have worked on it, and I know there are meetings, and I think it does identify who on council is kind of on point for the issue, so I left it. But I don't think there's an actual committee that I know of, so I'm just wondering...
There was a period there where Mark and Ann and I were going to meetings with Oregon Solutions, and we met with Megan Callahan-Grant. But there was a period where we had several meetings in maybe over six months, but yeah, that's been a while. So, I don't think of it as really a committee.
Do you all want to leave it to identify who's on point, or do you want me to take it off because it's not a committee?
I think it was an important project. I think it's important to keep it in there.
Okay. I'm just going to leave it. Okay.
And I would probably show, I don't know if there's a place for it, but I would probably show Nikki Wick as, as a partner somehow, you know.
Okay.
On library construction, meetings are no longer held monthly.
Okay.
And they're more when, when... And they're more when, when, when needed.
Okay.
And I heard a rumor that the KNGC Committee is meeting less frequently. I don't know what the new schedule is, but that was what Councillor Affma told me.
Oh, good. Well, he, he was working on that, so you're the beneficiary of that.
And I'm showing a vacancy there, but that's for me to figure out.
Oh.
I'm showing a citizen vacancy, but I'm not sure it's real, so I'll follow up with you on that.
I'm sorry, to which committee?
Kellogg Good Neighbor.
I don't know one either.
Yeah.
There is supposed to be an at-large.
There is supposed to be an at-large.
The two neighborhoods, neighborhoods each have two, and then there's supposed to be an at-large.
Yep.
And then under League of Oregon Cities, the legislative committees that Mark and I have been on, they were last year's committees, and any member of City Council can apply to be on any of their, what, five or six committees? But I think they have them every two years, if I'm correct.
They have them preceding the regular session.
Preceding the big sessions, so they would not have it in 19, but they'll have one in 20.
So should this come off now, since there's not one?
Maybe you could just leave it blank.
Just say dormant until 2020?
Keep it on there, because it won't be until next year.
And I would encourage all of you to, to look at, you know, it's, tends to be four meetings.
And you have to travel to Salem for them, or you can do them by phone?
You can.
You can.
You can.
It's difficult, but yeah.
Yeah, it's obviously harder to have.
Yeah.
But, and they're very accommodating, because I was on both the Community Development and the Energy, they switched around schedules to make those be the same days.
Back-to-back, nice.
They were actually overlapping by about an hour, but...
Yeah.
Sort of worked better.
So those two particular committees also were ones that were relevant to last year. They may totally change those in the years to come.
So I'm gonna add some verbiage in the focus area to make it clear that this opportunity arises in advance of session.
The biennial situation.
And that any member of council can participate. I'll put that information in there, and then I will leave the 2019, it'll just be, I'll say this is still dormant until 2020.
People say, "Yeah, I'm interested," and then somebody selects the groups.
So we are, technically speaking, still on both of those committees.
Are we? And they still...
Because they, throughout the session, they'll be reaching out and saying, "This is changing, or this is happening, do you guys feel like we need a meeting?" Or, "How's," you know?
So I'm gonna leave you in that box, then. But just say the next opportunity participates, 2020.
I didn't think about that aspect of it, but yeah, that's important.
So I'm on both of those committees, just for whatever that's worth.
And I did, for ease, kind of make it look like you're both on both, because it was hard for me to format it.
That's fine.
Okay.
We don't care.
As long as y'all kind of know, know where you're supposed to be.
Your name's down there, Eddie.
Okay. I made the changes to the meeting schedule for Library Construction Task Force. I'm gonna move on to page six, unless there's anything else.
Make sure I'm on the right page, yeah. This thing's jumping around.
Okay. For MPAC, it says that the alternate is TBD, it's Jim Bernard, so I'm just gonna make that correction. I've also doubled up on the Metro Mayors.
Or MPAC or JPAC?
You're talking about...
Oh, JPAC, I'm sorry. You're right, my apologies. JPAC'd on page six. Jim Bernard's name will get put in there, because that's who it is. And then I have two Metro Mayors Consortium boxes.
Wait, before you get off JPAC?
Yeah, yeah.
There is no guarantee that that's who's on it. Every year after the election, we, the city, the cities decide who's going to be on MPAC and JPAC, both the alternates and the primaries. It's unlikely to change.
So should I leave it TBD? Is that why it was TBD last time?
What, what, where does this tomorrow morning?
No, we didn't, we always do it at the regular CE4.
Not the Subcommittee?
And I, for some reason, we don't do it till March or something, I don't know.
That sounds like you should leave it for now, and you give her the updates when it...
We can update you when it, when and if it changes.
Okay. I'm not gonna make that change. This is where that language I was referencing before, Representatives to this Committee are appointed by CE4, that's the type of verbiage I'll put back on that County Budget item. Okay, so now, my, my mess up on the bottom is I have two Metro Mayors Consortium. On one, I am showing the subcommittees that the Mayor's on, and the other I am not. Do you want the subcommittees shown? Are you, are you okay just having the line for the Metro Mayors Consortium, since it would just be, I mean, you're the only one that's on the, that one?
However you wanna do it, I don't care. You could make the box bigger.
Oh, yeah, I'll cop it into one, no matter what, but...
Underneath it.
Okay.
However you wanna do it, but...
So I'm just gonna add your subcommittees up to that other line, she'll get them. Okay. All right. Page seven.
So the new Chair will be Martha Schrader.
She will be the Chair?
Yeah. Denny is done.
Is Denny off?
Denny Doyle?
Yeah.
No, he's just not the Chair anymore.
He's just sitting.
The Chair changes on MPAC every year, and it rotates between the counties.
Is...
No, the alternate won't be Brenda Perry.
We do know the alternate won't be Brenda Perry.
She's off council.
Is she off council?
Yep. And the primary won't be Betty Dominguez either.
Well, the primary's you.
Well, you've got primary, primary Clackamas County Citizen, although she's, that actually, we don't know.
She might be.
She's asked.
She could go back on it.
She's asked to be, again.
So when is a good time to update this one officially?
Probably check with, what's his name, Trent?
Yeah, Trent Wilson. But Betty Dominguez as the county rep, because that's what I did for 12 years, that's not appointed by, by the CE4 group or anybody else, it's appointed by the President of Metro. And I don't know when Lynn will, or if she's already made her choices. She appoints one rep from each county to represent the county as an entity.
Yeah, she, she may be not disbanding MPAC, but...
She may be reorganizing it.
So am I gonna spend a lot of time on MPAC updates? So I shouldn't spend a lot of time on MPAC updates right now?
Right now.
This is a takeaway from this conversation? Okay.
We have anything to do with, we'll come later.
I'm just gonna write "on hold" till spring.
Yeah.
Okay. Page eight. I don't have anything on here. Do y'all have any changes to page eight?
We still have Siri on that.
I do. Is it not her? I thought it was still her.
No, it's good.
Okay.
Yeah, it's good.
Okay.
Yeah, she likes doing that.
And I've updated our Rotary people.
Everybody can come anytime, as a guest.
Anything else? I'm gonna, or should we move on? Okay, page nine. The main help I need on, on page nine is the Oregon City Houseless Committee.
The Clackamas County, how does name change?
That's not the county one.
It's, it is the, what? Oh, there's a...
There's two.
Yeah.
You're talking about the North, oh, okay, not the North Clackamas Social Needs Roundtable, that's different.
Right, I have the Social Needs Roundtable, I also have the Homeless Committee that you were on, that was on a couple pages back, and then I, I believe there's also the Oregon City Houseless Committee, which is yours.
But it has a new name.
Oh, new name, okay.
But it has a new name, yes. It's not Oregon City anymore.
Homeless Solutions Coalition of Clackamas County.
Right.
Okay.
So it has a new name.
Yeah.
And we are, so that is also Alma. Valeria was able to attend this last one for me.
And I think we've actually made Valeria the permanent.
Okay. So, yeah, great. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm, for some reason, I was not seeing that currently.
And who, who's the governing entity of that? Like, who's, who?
There's...
Hosts it, and appoints, and does all that stuff?
I mean, they have a, well, I mean, there's a, there's a board, there's a steering committee, maybe, we need to look at, we haven't adopted anything yet on that, so...
It's not a formal structure at this point, because they expanded.
Not yet, yeah.
But it's Oregon City's former mayor, I believe, or former councilmember.
She's a councillor, yeah.
Nancy Ide.
But...
Well, she is a councilmember, she's a former city employee.
She was the former city recorder.
Recorder.
Yeah, no, I think that actually, they'll be coming to us and asking us to formally join with the resolution.
Yeah, I thought they were gonna do that a few months ago.
So, it has to go, they had to have another meeting before they can, we can, they need to invite us formally, so...
Okay.
Okay. And that gives me what I need for now. Do you wanna put anything about when you all meet on here? Frequency?
It's once, it's once a quarter, I think, but I wanna, I'll, how about if I give you, I'll, I'll fill in all of the blanks for you.
That would be awesome.
Okay.
Or you can, if Valeria knows it, I can, I can talk to her, too. Okay. Any other changes on page nine? Okay, page 10. We have Mayor's Association, and then I have the Elected Forum. And I know, Lisa, you had asked today about the meeting schedule for this one, I believe, because when you go online...
Yeah, I got me an answer.
I got you an answer. There's also a secondary committee associated with this that I need to talk about for a minute, that's new. It's not technically new. So, when Karen sat on the council, there was an advisory body to Wes, and when Wes sort of reformulated into, from two districts into a singular district, they reconstituted the Advisory Board.
Is that what's called River Health?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
So on that, there was an application process. Karen, again, asked to be the rep to sit on that, and they were told yes. We ran into a sticky wicket this week, in which our IGA requires that we actually have a member on that board, so that you have a chance to review the SDCs and any fee changes, and that is a part of our legally binding agreement, just to make sure that we're not having rates hoisted onto the city, because we are a contract agent.
That's something Shane was not going to.
Shane was not going to that, but they are inter-tied, and it wasn't until this week that Greg Geist and Karen and I all realized that we had a problem with the makeup of the committee because of the inter-local agreement. Greg has said he's happy to give us a seat. It's not a big deal. And to make up for it in the interim, until we can get someone seated on that committee, he'd like to come talk to all of you about the rate increase, before he takes it to his board, just to make sure that we fully are included in the process. And then he's also going to go talk to CUAB about the rate increase. So Karen, in the end, voted against it. She voted against the motion because they didn't have one of you on the board. That was her only reason. She wanted to make sure that they heard her, that it's really important that this city have representation. So we've tied all those together in the past, and so I wanted to make sure whoever takes it understands that there's probably another board and another role within that. They've been meeting quarterly to date, they're now meeting every other month, so they did increase the number of meetings by two, just because they're looking at SDCs, and they wanna make sure that they have robust dialogues as they're going through that process, which is gonna be at least a year-long process. I, I just wanna call out again that Greg Geist was really sorry, and really generous about the mistake, and he wanted, he didn't want you guys to think that was intentional in any way, it was really, truly just an oversight, but he wants to make sure that we rectify it. And the way to rectify it, under the IGA, is for one of you to sit.
And do you know if those are evening meetings?
They are. They are evening meetings. Karen was there, I believe, around 7:00 PM at the last one. So it is like a 7:00 to 9:00 PM kind of thing. She was there for a couple hours, just based on the emails that I was getting as she was going through the process, to make sure that I was in the loop about what was happening.
And not any certain day of the month, or week, like?
If, if we, if it becomes an issue, so if, if you wanna appoint someone tonight as sort of a general agreement, then I can work with that person to try and figure out how to rig that. If it doesn't work, we can bring it back at a future date to try and find somebody else to cover it. But like I said, I talked to him yesterday, this is all pretty new.
I was just thinking if I could find it.
I was gonna say, I mean, I was, the Mayor had asked me to consider doing this one that's on the chart, but it was not formed in February 2010, I think it was formed out of the whole chaos about three years ago. So I'm a little confused, there've been so many different ones.
Two different iterations, in essence, the same thing. They did form a new organization, but near as I could tell, it's doing the exact same thing as the old organization, but there's probably some technical difference that I'm...
So the Elected Forum has been the one around governance, and do we need to have a discussion there? The advisory body I'm talking about is their, their advisory body for the existence today, so it's not about every city having equal say, it is about having representation across the entire district.
It's sort of like the District Advisory Board for NCPRD that advises.
The Water Environment Services Advisory Committee, the meeting you're talking about was January 10th, from 6:30 to 8:30 PM.
Is that down at Thursday?
And it was out at the, yeah, it was out at the county, it was out on the campus.
Out at Red Soils?
Yeah, in the Development Services Building.
Okay.
Yeah. That's where that one was. I mean, I'm assuming they would all be there. The next, yeah, and they hadn't had one for, the one before that had been September 27th, and 2018, and June 14th. They don't, they're not monthly, according to, at least if their materials are up to date, but we'd have to confirm that.
Yeah, no, they've moved from every three months to every two. So that's a new thing for the board.
Well, I am not chomping at the bit, to be the queen of the sewer debates, but I do have a lot of history in it, so, I mean, if nobody wants to do it, I'll do it, but I would be happy to be.
It is something I know nothing about, so if there are contentious issues where some history would be really useful, then I would accede to your experience. If that is increasing your overall workload, and there's something you wanna offload onto me, I'm totally happy to take whatever.
So you do have the strongest history on this one?
Right. So my interest is more in the, I mean, I think the SDC discussion is important, because like, you've been pushing for differentiating SDCs based on floor...
Size of the property.
Size of the property, size of the construction, and, you know, lower rates for ADUs and things like that, so I mean, I do think there are some things, you know, that are important in that discussion, but my personal issue is the bigger rate discussion, and the, but, you know, truthfully, I don't know.
Well, and just so you know, the rate discussion is a part of this board that you would now be, this new board that you'd be sitting on. So that's actually specifically where they overstepped, is they put in a 10-year projection. It did not have someone from this council sitting on that. I believe the projection was over the course of the 10 years, it's a 30% increase. It sounds big. It sounds big, but in reality, that's a 3% per year kind of projected increase, which is not outside of the norm for our other utilities. So it's just something to think about is you actually, that is the board where you would have some sway over how those rates are increased.
That's their increase, but that doesn't count our increase for our maintenance of pipes and stuff, right?
Correct, and that's also why they are saying they made a mistake in not going to CUAB. They have done that in the past and have asked them to work with Peter to get on the schedule for that discussion as well. We've all just had staff turnover. I think that it was, I really do think it was unintentional, but it is the place where they're going to be talking about this before it goes to the commission for adoption.
It sounds like Lisa's history would be beneficial.
No one's going to save Lisa.
I'll start going. I'm not promising to stay.
Put it that way.
As a backup.
Okay. I'm going to.
You're chauffeur.
And then you're so, you know, you'll learn it. You'll pick it up.
Hopefully, I mean, you know, that's all contingent on it not competing with my other Nicky Wick or water providers or my other meetings. But yeah, I'll start going. I can do the one at the end of this month that they're doing, so.
Okay.
Well, and we're, I had offered when we were originally talking about this, that Justin has a background and it is something that Peter has worked a little bit on, I've worked a little bit on. So on the off meetings, when we have a conflict, please do reach out to us if we can make it work. It's sort of like when they went through the report out, I made a point of going. So just if you know that there's something you can't get to and we think that there's something on the agenda worth looking at as a team, then we'll make it work.
Okay, so I'm going to add the Wes Advisory Committee. I'm going to make some edits to the verbiage and the focus to take that date out that doesn't make any sense and get the meeting information, regularity information put into here about the Wes Advisory Meeting and the Elected Official Forum too. Okay, page 11. I have no changes.
So the Regional Water Providers Consortium, I guess I never read this very closely before. It is, the meeting schedules are three times a year, not quarterly.
Okay.
And they start at 6:30, not 7:00. I guess the rest of it's.
Microphone.
Oh. The meetings, gosh, my chair keeps whirling. Meetings are three times a year and at 6:30. I think the rest of it's okay.
Okay.
Yeah. Oh, no, this is the question. There's, so it shows Executive Committee. Yeah, this is kind of a, this was weird to me. So I'm not on the Executive Committee. I'm on the board. So every constituent agency, member agency has a board member and I'm on the board. From that board, there is an Executive Committee, but I'm not on the Executive Committee. I'm just a board member. And I never heard of a, heard them talk about Conservation Committee, so I think that's something maybe left over from before.
Okay, I'll delete that and I will take out the Executive Committee reference.
You might want to check on that because I think there is one.
I mean, they give a report on all the committees and all the activity, so I don't think there is. I mean, they do conservation work. We talk about it every time, but I don't think there's an active separate committee.
Okay, any other changes to this page? Is the Safe Energy Leadership Alliance active?
Not nearly as active as it was a couple of years ago.
No, and actually I had a little back and forth with them recently and they were saying, yeah, we need a, we need a meeting. Get back to you, so.
We'll leave it. T-PAC, did they vote on the staff? Or did that happen?
No, that's tomorrow morning.
Okay, I'll wait.
I'm going to put your name in.
No, it's not funny. All right, last page. Unless there is other changes on 11, Urban Renewal Agency, that's the only one there. I think we're good.
It's all of us.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay.
Shane, never mind. Just scooted over.
Yeah, that's all I got. Thank you for going through it. I'm going to make these adjustments. If you think of anything, let me know. And then the cleaned-up version will come back on consent is the next step in the process, so.
Thank you, Kelly.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Alrighty. Council Compensation Task Force Discussion.
So we are, we've met with Lynn, based on the feedback from council that you would like us to look at that as an option, which is the healthy democracy option. First and foremost, I want to give him a lot of credit. I think Justin and I have both really enjoyed the conversations with him. His perspective, his process has been really pretty incredible. And the grace and dignity it brings to that discussion has been really lovely. His, a couple of things, we've talked twice now. We have a third meeting set up. They're not sure that this is the right thing for them and they were going to grant fund it. And so they're looking at a variety of cities to test this out and they can't give us an answer on whether or not this would be the thing they wanted to do until February. He's in Paris, lucky guy for work. I don't know how he pulled that off. But he comes back at the beginning of February and so we're going to meet again and just sort of talk through where he is with his executive director on that front. I've also really appreciated that he's looking at their own biases and their own issues internally as a structure before they make an agreement. And so he wanted just to spend some thoughtful time on that, and he is. And what the structure could look like to give us that, that very clean process that you guys have asked for. So we'll know more, but that's where we are right now. That's the only process we have really investigated. We sort of see that there, that we would basically recreate that process if he decided not to go down that path. It is an expensive process. So just, just from time and bringing in somebody and creating that process, it would be spending. So I just want to make sure that you know that. Anything you want to add?
No, not much to add. Lynn's been a pleasure to talk with. We've had some really good conversations. And I think, like Ann said, they have to figure out if it fits with, with their model. And they're doing some internalizing of some issues to see whether it'll fit. And he's gone for two weeks and we'll meet again when he comes back.
Yep. Sound good? Any questions that you want to make sure we pose to him or any discussions you want us to have? Okay, then we'll continue down this path. If it looks like it's not something that he can provide, then we'll come back to you and say, what is your alternative? And this has given us a chance to think through how, what the process would need to look like for us and that gives us some sense for what we would have to price it out at.
And how we would have to staff it.
Yeah.
Staff's the wrong word, but how we'd have to organize it.
Okay, so that's all I have tonight on that front.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Good announcements.
Yep, I have a script. To commemorate the birthday of American Civil Rights Leader Reverend Martin Luther, Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr., City Hall and the Johnson Creek Building and the Letting Library will all be closed on Monday, January 21st. The city is currently seeking nominations for the 2018 Volunteer of the Year. Nominates can include anyone who resides in Milwaukee or are members of a nonprofit organization or business that serves the Milwaukee community. Nominations are accepted through an online forum through Friday, February 15th at 5:00 PM. Tickets are currently on sale for the Milwaukee Police Department's Officer of the Year Dinner and Award Ceremony on Tuesday, March 12th at 6:00 PM at the Elks Lodge. Tickets are $31 and must be purchased by February 16th. The city is currently accepting applications for tourism grants through the Clackamas County Community Partnership Program. Qualifying projects are those that demonstrate an ability to bring visitors into Milwaukee from more than 50 miles away. Applications must be received by 5:00 PM on Thursday, February 28th. Save the date for my annual State of the City address on Thursday, February 7th at 5:30 PM at the Milwaukee Masonic Lodge. All are welcome to attend. If you are not able to attend in person, it will be broadcast live on Comcast Channel 30 in the City Limits and on the City's YouTube channel. For more information about each of the events mentioned, please visit the city's homepage at www.milwaukieoregon.gov.
So two, these are not until February and so we'll have a chance to announce them again, but two upcoming planting events or park events, February 9th. NCPRD be leading a planting of native plants in Three Creeks, which is not in Milwaukee, but is in our UGMA and will be very close to Milwaukee once we annex the college. And it's a great place. If you've never been there, it's a fascinating place. So Saturday, Saturday, February 9th, planting from 9:00 to 12:00 at Three Creeks. And then Saturday, February 23rd is the Spring Park, the work to put Christmas trees in the water between Spring Park and Elk Rock Island. And I think there will probably also be some planting.
There is some planting too.
So more about those in February, but mark calendars.
This is something I didn't bring up during the county's presentation, but I was reminded when I was reading their packet or our packet on that presentation. We apparently are still using ASHTO standards. Is that correct? So I was told.
Public work standards as our guiding, our guiding standards.
Our guiding standards aren't based on ASHTO?
They might, they may be, but I don't know. We're doing an update to them right now, but I bet, I mean, I bet if you, I don't go and look for an ASHTO guide every day or I don't see the engineers doing that, they're referencing our public work standards. My guess is when those were developed, they were based on ASHTO standards. That, I mean, it's honestly kind of hard for me to answer because so much of what we're doing right now in terms of trying to modify or adjust to fit sidewalks in and trees and everything else, it doesn't scream ASHTO to me. But if you're asking the ASHTO-NACTO question, I'd have to think about how you would actually overlay the NACTO standards in comparison with our public work standards. So did someone say, I guess, where did it come from? Where'd the question come from?
Well, this, several years ago, I attended an all-day workshop with planner.
Who's gone?
No, Brett, with Brett. And it was a workshop on, actually a two-day workshop on NACTO. And just the way they approached everything, every, every intersection, every way driveways interacted with, it made so much sense in an environment where you're trying to encourage walking and bicycling. The ASHTO standards were set up by engineers designing to get as many cars through as fast as possible in every situation, no matter what. NACTO is thinking about being in an urban area and having humans interacting with that traffic. And at the time, I asked, I said, so what's, what's it take to be using these standards instead of those standards? And he says, you guys can just adopt it as a council. And then I hadn't really thought about it for years. This was, this was clear back during the first council I was on. And I probably brought it up at that council and they were all, you know, change was the big evil back then. I, I would be really interested at some point in at least taking a very light look on whether it's worthwhile for this city to adopt NACTO over ASHTO. If there are situations where we do go, okay, well, what's the standard that we're supposed to be applying in this instance? Or what's the standard we're supposed to be, because I just, across the board in every instance, the NACTO standard was better.
So I don't, I'm going to answer something you didn't ask. So this is our engineering team who are also trying to deliver those safe programs and all those projects right now. Kelly may be hiring somebody who could do that right now. I don't think she is today. But I'm nervous just about that same team is currently. When you've asked me at other meetings, who's at max? That engineering team is at max.
I guess, I mean, I will just, I would love maybe just to talk more offline about it, what, what the things that caught your eye. There are some instances, depending on the type of money you got or the type of project you're building, you're in ASHTO world and you're just going to have to, that's, that's what it is. Those are the standards that apply. We do very little in that realm that I encounter or experience. And I think if you look at a lot of the practical design decisions and the ways that we're trying to build a system that helps people want to walk and bike and, you know, slower, it's, we're, we're on the, we're on the kind of the other side of the line in most, in terms of most of what we're developing right now. The question is for me, it really wouldn't, the rubber meets the road in our city public work standards. So how, what is a NACTO that's not in our public work standards? And that in terms of a staffing effort right now could be pretty challenging to go pour through, but we do have to do regular updates. So I think it's getting at what is the specific design element that you're not seeing? That, because it's probably a public works twist, but it's also probably trainings. I mean, we're doing like webinars and we're doing different things to try to get ourselves up to speed about some of these things. ASHTO itself has been making modifications to those standards as well, incorporating some of those NACTO elements. You kind of have to be okay with both in some instances, depending on what you want to construct. But for us, for city projects, I don't see anything right now that's holding me back from going a NACTO way. I mean, generically, I don't, I guess I don't see it as a barrier to me right now. But if I know what you're talking about more, it would help. Because then I could go into our public work standards and kind of take out some examples and see, see where there's inconsistencies.
Yeah, it was just a reference in the report where they said, and city staff said that these were the standards, blah, 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 ASHTO, blah, blah, blah. And I was like, oh, we never got that changed, so.
Okay, to be, to be continued. Is that all right? Okay.
I would move to adjourn.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, we are adjourned.